Okay, it is 6:01 on March 2nd, 2021. I'm going to go ahead and call this special meeting to order. It is Texas's 185th birthday, so happy birthday, Texas. Great day to meet with council. I will go ahead and open this up to, oh, nope, roll call. Jennifer, can I get you to call the roll?
Sure. Mitchell. Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Tobias.
Okay, we have six members present. Next up is citizens' comments period. If there's anybody in the gallery, I'm sorry, I cannot see you. I can't see what the gallery looks like. If there's anybody there wishing to speak, please do. Jennifer, can you hear me?
I haven't received any citizen comment forms.
Okay, no comment forms and no one online? Okay, sounds like we don't have anybody on for citizens' comments. So citizens' comments period is now closed. Next item, executive session. Councilmember Bradshaw.
It's my turn. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, tax credit housing, city lights and Kyle Marketplace subdivision/development, 104 South Burleson, Plum Creek land dedication, possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072, Plum Creek land dedication, and convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, 104 South Burleson.
Thank you, Councilmember Flores Cale. We are now in executive session.
The time is, sorry, my watch, 7:09 PM. It is Tuesday, March 2nd. Now, actually, we have to adjourn a special meeting first.
We need item four.
What's that?
Item four.
I'm going to, proper way to say this, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. And there was no action taken during executive session. There'll be no action taken now. Next up, agenda, we do need to take action actually on 104 South Burleson.
On the notice.
The notice to proceed. Next up agenda, item number four, notice to dedicate land from Mountain Plum to City of Kyle, Mr. Sellers.
And I'm going to look, Paige, are you with us?
I am.
Okay. So just want to make sure Paige is here. Go for it.
So I believe you have posted the ability to take action on any items when you come out of executive session.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the land conveyance agreements in the form authorized by the city attorney in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll just say really quick, Mayor, this is to authorize the conveyance of land for our two parks in the Plum Creek uptown area, Heroes Memorial Park and Central Square Park.
Awesome. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Now we have to wait.
Could you unadjourn and authorize the notices? authorize, there's an agenda item for the notices as well, Scott?
That's, Paige, that's what he just did. I think she might have a lag.
She's trying to understand.
Paige, we just took action on number four?
On number four?
Per.
You took action on the land conveyance agreements. Number four is also authorization to issue the notice. And so that's a separate action.
Okay. All right, so if there are no objections, we're going to move back into executive, or the special session. And I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number four.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the mayor, second by councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Are we good now, Paige?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. And now we're going to let the tapes roll over and we'll start our regular city council meeting. Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:13 PM. It is Tuesday, March 2nd. And I'm going to call this regular city council meeting to order. Would all please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the city secretary, please call the roll.
Mitchell.
Here.
Coach.
Here.
Ellison.
Present.
Flores Cale.
Here.
Rizzo.
Present.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Tobias.
Here.
All right, we have seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for a special meeting on February 23rd and regular meeting the same day.
Okay, second, it's been moved by Councilmember Tobias, second by the mayor, to approve the minutes for February 23rd. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, to please do so. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and that you address the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a public comments form and submit it to either myself or the city secretary. Right now, I have registered to speak, Ms. Angelina Chapa.
Councilmember, mayor, staff. I'm here to speak about last week's agenda, the 23rd, considering the possible action to direct the P&amp;Z Commission to revise the CBD 1 and CBD 2 zoning codes. I want to thank all of you for considering and taking the time to, hopefully that you remember that we of the CBD 1 still want to remain CBD 1. And also, thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Mr. Rizzo, you did a good job in representing of what our area is expecting and hoping that they consider. And take us in consideration of what we are and what we've been there for a long time. Thank you, Councilwoman Tobias, Mr. Ellison, that the vision that the Texas Downtown Realization Association did say, I remember, that we were to start at the square. One of the members walked all the way to Vaqueros. And she said, stick with the square because there's nothing down here that interests me. So I do remember. I also remember that they, at the meeting, they were pushing different cities of how these cities that more or less like Kyle turn out to be beautiful and businesslike restaurants. And I made it a point to go to Tyler. That was one of the cities that they have. And city, it's more or less like San Marcos. They have a lot of buildings around. And one thing that I noticed, that they have a lot of the residential, but all of their streets are fixed. At least 10 blocks on the sites of each town. And, but you got to remember also that they have universities that help with that. I remember Councilwoman Ellison. He and I, when he, I was supporting a person that was running against, but Mr. Ellison won. And I remember he and I were standing at the railroad. And he asked, why are you doing this? I said, why? I said, I've been here since 1974. And nothing has really been done to our city since I've been here. I said, Burleson had not even been worked on. I said, we have broken clay infrastructures. We have no sidewalks. We don't have lights. Burleson's not done. And I don't see any improvements. And he said, but you have to bring development in to fix infrastructure. And I said, they fix their infrastructure, not our infrastructure. Thank you. That could take longer, so.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa. That's the only form I have in front of me. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Jennifer, do we have anyone online? All right, so if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. You can talk about whatever you'd like to talk about for three minutes. That'd be fine. It's supposed to be of general importance to the city. All right, so if there are no objections, I'm going to bring citizen comments back to allow this lady to speak. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Please state your name for the record.
Sarah Robinson, nurse. I'm here to talk about your new ordinance that you're trying to put on sex offenders. And I understand that some people are really scared for sex offenders to be in their neighborhood or to live next to them. My thing is, there are some sex offenders who have children who have to deal with their children on a daily lives, on a daily basis. And I don't think that it's fair for some of them not to be able to go into schools when they have children. My husband, he is a sex offender. He met a girl online who says she was of age and she was, turned out to be underage. And he did his time. He did his eight years probation. And there's, I don't understand why you would want to still make him pay for something he's already did his time for. We have three small children. And he, I work a full-time job. And luckily, he's a stay-at-home dad. He's a veteran. And he has to deal with my children on a daily basis when I'm at work. So telling him that he cannot go into a school, he doesn't go in the school to participate. Then he goes to school, picks up my kids, stays in the office, and then leaves. And to tell him that he can't take my kids to a park, I think that's very unfair. Because there's people, people live next to robbers, murderers, child abusers. People would rather live next to these people than next to a sex offender. You're likely to get COVID than have one of these sex offenders here in this city mess with your kid. And I don't think, I think all the sex offenders that live here in the neighborhood. I personally went door-to-door, Sunday night and Monday night, to talk to majority of these sex offenders. And most of them were like, what is going on? They had no idea that this ordinance was trying to take place. And they were like, we mind our business. One man takes care of his mom who's 90 years old. He's like, well, what happens? And you're trying to kick some of these peoples out if they don't have a place to go? I don't think that's fair. I think that I have my daughter who is here with me. And she's like, Mom, Dad can't go trick-or-treating with us. And I'm like, well, that's what they're trying to say. I understand that, don't leave your light on. I get, because people, you don't know. There are some really crazy people out there. But I honestly don't think it's fair. And I want to know, like, where are you getting your statistics from? It's not fair at all. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Gus Villarreal. And I heard about this meeting about 3 o'clock this afternoon. So I really didn't know, and I'm not all that prepared. But there's rules and laws already in place by the state for most of the stuff that you guys may be setting up city ordinances for. I would think that if you are going to do something like that, there would be signage at each one of these places with a, you know, an X or a circle so that everyone would know that in the sex offender program, would know that they couldn't enter or couldn't go by. I mean, we already know much of where we're supposed to be and where we're not supposed to be. And I was hoping that maybe Officer Pate or the chief would be here. Because I wanted to ask him if I was a, I am a sex offender. So I wanted to ask him if I was a dangerous sex offender. And that's going to be the real question, is who's dangerous and who's not? If he says, I'm dangerous, he called me the other day and he asked me, which is really weird. He asked me, do you own your home? And I go, uh, yeah. And then he hung up, and that was the end of that. So I don't understand what y'all are trying to do. I've heard that Legander and some of these other municipalities are starting to pass ordinances. If you guys are trying to follow them, then maybe we should look at how everything is working over there. But again, most of these rules and laws that I heard about that may be changed are already in place by the state. I have four grandkids live here. And two of my children live here. I have 13 grandchildren kids total. Two are in Canyon Lake. And I've got four in Houston. I got two in El Paso. So I moved up here to be with them and hang out with them. But I don't always go to the places where they go. You know, and these are little kids. I think the oldest is 10. And the youngest is three. So what do we do? Maybe we can wear a bracelet or something and say, hey, we're a registered sex offender, but we are nonviolent, you know? I mean, how are you going to separate the bad ones from the good? I also know that some of these sex offenders have to report every 90 days. I report once a year. And so I would like to put this, like, a study to this, to see where it's headed. What do you all want to do with it? You know, what do you want to do with this information? Is it the real estate companies that are pushing you to do this? I don't know. Is it the police department that's pushing you to do this? And we haven't gotten any answers. It'd be nice to get some answers. And also, I'd like to get notified when you guys are having these kind of meetings. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak? Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Martin Torres. And when I pled guilty in my charge, I'm a sex offender as well. I only had one place to live, and that's with my grandparents back here. If anybody knows them, we own Mr. T's Watchteria. If I move and I, if I have to be one of these people that have to leave, they have no one else to help them. That's my problem. Like, the only place I had to live is there. And like, I mean, we already have these rules already in place to make them worse. And like, how, I read an article that says, you know, it's just 60 people that had to leave. What if it was 60 people that weren't sex offenders that were told they just had to leave? To me, that's not fair. But, I mean, like I said, like you said, maybe if you do some statistics and stuff and see, like you said, people that report, I report every 90 days myself. I have offended once. I was 15 when I did my offense. I've been on probation nine, about to be nine years, about to be off next month, or next year in June. Haven't messed up, haven't done anything wrong. Like you said, how are you supposed to tell which offenders are the worst, which ones aren't the worst? Like, I met a lot of people on probation that are sex offenders that didn't even commit a sex crime. Like, to them, that's pretty unfair. But, like I said, it's unfair to pretty much all of us, man. Like, I don't know what else to say, but that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Hi.
Hi. Please state your name for the record.
Since Sarah Robinson. I just like to say a quick word because for my dad to be a sex offender, I really don't think it's fair. And for him, to me, I have two little brothers who are younger than me. And we usually go to a park with my dad. And for him not to come and trick-or-treat with us.
Do you want to step a little closer to the train? Just take a half step a little closer and pull the microphone down just a little bit. There you go. And we're going to wait for the train to go. All right, go ahead.
For my dad not to be able to go trick-or-treating with us is unfair because we usually go with my mom and my dad. And we go knocking door-to-door and we have fun. And for my dad not to come, I don't really want to go trick-or-treating anymore. I think it's unfair that he don't get to come and he has to stay at home. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? If the four that just spoke wouldn't mind, there's, we have a public comments form. And you can get it either right at the front up here and fill it out. And you can hand it to Jennifer over there in the purple. Thank you so much. All right, if there are no objections now, I'm going to close citizen comments period. All right, next up, city managers' report. And Scott, you can just go through the main ones and we'll get through the internal ones after the meeting at the end.
Okay, give me one moment here while I get my screen shared. Apologize for that. All right, sorry about that. Okay, there we go. It's responding. So we have the curative mobile testing that continues through, I guess, you know, until they decide not to do the test anymore. So that continues, and we report on that every meeting. We did hear word from our governor today about the change to the mask requirement through the state. We have yet to make a decision on how that's going to affect us. That was very recent news. We'll be discussing that at a later time. The mass food distribution event, there is another one on March 13th. And I wanted to say thank you again to those that coordinated the last one during our snowvid event here. But the next one is March 13th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Again, we're always looking for volunteers. The annual community survey, so we've done this, I believe, five years. This is our sixth community survey that we are about to release. This Friday is our anticipated date to issue that. And that will be online again as last couple of years through Survey Monkey. You'll see the link there, cityofkyle.com/survey. We will push that out every avenue that we can to get the public to be made aware and to have an opportunity to take that survey. We did send that to council. You've all had the draft for a little bit. And if there are any questions this year, we, usually each year, we add one or two key questions depending on the topic. And this year, we've added a couple of questions about the citywide trail system. We'll have a little more of a presentation on that later in this meeting. But otherwise, most of the questions are the same as years prior so we can benchmark you over your results. Again, if you have any questions, please let us know prior to Friday. 2021 Annual City Council Vision Workshop. As council is very aware, that did get postponed due to the weather event as well. The date of the rescheduled event is going to be in April per our facilitator's availability. So I know that we called around to verify that you were all available. That will be April 17th. So what goes with that is the first budget retreat. If councilor remembers, that was scheduled for the 10th, which was the week prior. So we will be moving that to May 1st. So please look at your calendars and schedule the 17th for that vision workshop and then May 1st for the first budget retreat. And then we'll take those comments from the workshop and have the retreat, from the workshop, and then have the first budget retreat accordingly. International Pi Day is 3/1/4, March 14th. So that is coming up. Again, because of COVID, most of the events have been changed from an in-person to a virtual format. So please get on our website and help us celebrate in the few ways that we can with Pi Day. Our great Texas River cleanup is right around the corner. That is the Saturday, March 6th, from 8:00 to 4:00. We've had some pretty good signup registrations from teams already. And I think we've done this now four years as well. Every time, it's a great turnout. And we do a lot of trash removal along the Plum Creek. This year, we're going to add a little bit of the Blanco River Basin cleanup areas. So please get online at cityofkyle.com/cleanup if you and your team or your group would like to volunteer to be part of this event. Again, because of COVID, it's a little different. We're just asking people to go right to the spot and start cleaning up. But it's being coordinated by Kathy Rager, and she's done a great job with it. March 8th, again, is also coming right up. That is International Women's Day. And we did send out, we took a picture with our wonderful female employees here at the city. We sent that out to staff. And we just wanted to make everyone aware here on council and the public that we do celebrate that. And we definitely honor the women who are in our lives and make us who we are. So thank you to all women domestically and internationally because it's International Women's Day. So thank you. In that same spirit, March 5th is Employee Appreciation Day. And I know we'll be appreciating some of our employees that went over above and beyond during this last storm event. But to all employees of the City of Kyle and within the City of Kyle, we appreciate you. And please take a moment to thank the employees. March 5th. And then we have the post-incident report from Winter Storm Uri. The, just a quick conversation, not to belabor, but I was asked to just share what the city had done prior to the event and what action steps we are taking because of the event. And I know a lot of cities, basically every city in Texas, was affected by the storm, the rolling blackouts. We were not immune from that. And we had a lot of issues and employees that stepped up and addressed those issues in a very remarkable way. Typically, when we receive weather reports that our temperatures are going to drop into freezing or sub-freezing temperatures, we will go out and we will weatherize or winterize our pipes and our equipment. We did do that for this event. And some people have asked, you know, why were we not prepared? We actually were. We went through our protocols with weatherization, with sanding roads, et cetera. What we were not prepared for was the blackouts. And when we had lost power to our pumps at our well sites and then when our main water supplier, GBR, lost power to their pumps, things started to freeze up very quickly. And unfortunately, once they froze, we were not able to get our pumps up and running. And we had employees that literally spent 24-plus hours with blowtorches trying to thaw out the ice within those pipes. We have pictures of some of those pipes that burst and they were just solid blocks of ice. So, you know, real damage occurred to our system, but we were able to address it, cut out the bad pipes, and install new ones. get it warmed up and get water flowing. Again, a huge lift Herculean effort from our employees. You can see our roads, TexDOT jumped in, added a de-icing agent to the roadways. We we tried to run our water through our pipes as much as we could to keep ice from forming. We had our SCADA system, which is uh basically the remote system checking our water levels. Uh, we made sure that that was up and running in advance. Uh, we had a fuels, we took all of our our vehicles, made sure they were fueled up. And then uh, we had uh agreements with local service stations to ensure that we would still have enough fuel for emergency vehicles. Then we we had created these uh emergency alert templates to expedite the delivery to community. And uh, for those of you who are residents of Kyle, you probably got a a phone call. Uh, and you probably saw a lot of uh messages go out on social media and through our our other uh response channels. And uh, big kudos to our communications team that that kept those alerts moving. You can see here with the response timeline, uh, it's it's way too small to read on the screen, but it basically goes through uh when the disaster was declared on the fourteenth, the loss of power, loss of water, and then some of the things that we had done during the event to respond to the needs of the citizens. Uh, such as we created a shelter, a warming shelter at the United Methodist Church. Uh, we had uh agreements with with PEC to to try to isolate our water tower sites or our our pump sites, I guess, the wells, to to keep those from being shut off. We uh had to issue a boil water notice because of those those pumps seizing up. And uh, we had a warming, you know, we had warming buses, we did a mass food distribution event. We supplied potable water uh out of the well site at Hayes High School uh for the community. Uh, so those water filling stations. We then uh even had portable showers taken to some of our residents that that were without water for a very extended period of time. Moving forward, looking at post incidents, uh, we have looked at uh a variety of things. One of the things that that I wanted to bring forward to the public and remind the council, uh, you know, council's been very proactive over the last five or six years, really back to the early two thousands when it was, at the time, it was realized that our water situation was not going to keep up with our growth situation. And at the time, HCPUA was formed and that ultimately turned into what is now called Alliance Regional Water Authority. Identified a a large supply of water in the Cariza Wilcox Aquifer. And we have been working for for years now on securing those rights and building infrastructure to get that that supply of water to us. Uh, that would be our third source of water from wells, GBRA, and then ARWA, which is again groundwater from Cariza Wilcox. Uh, our, our estimated timeline of of when those, that construction will be done is uh a couple of years from now. So basically twenty-four months uh to bring that additional water source to the city. So in the event that we do have another outage, another event like this, we'll have yet another source of water to rely on. We're also building, uh, based on the the response from the the latest election from the citizenry. They approved a public safety center that includes an emergency operations center. So uh, that building is is currently finishing its design phase and then should go under construction in July of this year. Uh, a fourteen, fifteen month build uh is anticipated. And then we will have that emergency operations center. We'll be able to basically handle our own events uh with our own emergency manager. So we're working into having that ability to have an emergency manager. Uh, and uh, with that, uh, work on ICS training or NIMS training, which is the National Incident Management System for our council member, for our staff, and for those that will be specially operating that center and out in the the field responding to those events. Uh, we do have a little interactive map that is available on our City of Kyle website that shows uh what water service provider uh you are. One of the questions that came up during the event was, do I have City of Kyle water? Do I have Monarch water? Do I have County Line water? So this, using this tool, you can easily add your address uh into your address and then it will tell you exactly who your water service provider is. Uh, so so there's no more confusion there. And this is a a reminder, I know we we've had this program for a while, but we wanted to bring it to the forefront, especially now uh that we, some of our residents are dealing with with leaks caused by the storm. But we do have a water leak adjustment policy. Uh, there is a form that uh is on our website. You can see thecityofkyle.com and and find that form. And uh, it's it's an easy form to complete and submit. And uh, you will be eligible for an adjustment based on the the circumstances for that that water loss. Again, if it's related to the storm, uh, get on the the website and and add your address to that form and and we'll be in contact with you. And then the final thing, I did mention uh NIMS and emergency management. The the other thing is we we have been in communication with our our state representatives. Our hope is that uh through this legislative session, there can be relief, not just for Kyle, but for all Texas cities. Uh, that would be uh a a large assistance, especially for weatherization, for generators. Uh, you know, items that that we didn't really think of before for what, from a weatherization standpoint, but we know that we need. And uh, you know, we're we're supporting and optimistic that our our state representatives can can authorize that legislation for us. And that concludes the the city manager's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sellers. All right, next up, agenda item number five, discussion and possible action to recognize Kyle city employees for their extraordinary efforts during winterstorm Uri. This is an item that I think we've all uh are ready to bring forward, but uh, Mr. Sellers, we'll turn the floor over to you. Or is it to Mayor Protem? It's Mayor Protem. Let me see him.
Here I am. Um, Mr. Sellers, you can kick us off with this. You've taken us through uh kind of our process here that we want to bring before council on how to recognize everyone. I'm not sure if my video is shaky right now, but it looks like it's lagging on my end. So uh, Mr. Sellers, can you uh bring this item forward?
Absolutely. Uh, Mayor Council, so at the last council meeting a week ago, you had uh basically cast some very, very heartfelt thanks to the staff, uh, to the community, to a lot of our partner organizations that all stepped up during the winterstorm Uri event. And uh, we, we were in the process of gathering names and and stories of those that really went above and beyond. We had quite a few staff that uh that were instrumental in in keeping our systems operable as much as possible, getting them back online when they went offline, keeping our roads safe, keeping our customers safe, going around uh finding leaks, helping shut off water, uh, helping get food to those in need, going to the hospital and cooking food and finding restaurants to donate food for for employees there. Uh, we had a lot of businesses in the community that that stepped up and donated supplies or food. And it was really a a city lift, a a large team lift. But we did have uh a a good number of employees that really stepped up and went above and beyond. Some of them uh sleeping on the floor of Public Works, for example, during the event. Some of them walking to work because they couldn't get their cars here. Some of them uh driving across the United States to try to meet the the need, right? Uh, at the wastewater treatment plant, driving back and forth all night long, keeping our our generator full of diesel. All those things happen behind the scenes. Uh, but tonight, we like to to call out some of those stories and uh read the names of these staff members who who truly need, you know, or deserve to have their names read because of their their efforts for this event. So I have a list of names. I know Mayor Protem had a few uh stories he would like to share that go along with those names. Mayor Protem, would you like to read the names and the stories or how would you like to do that?
Yeah, I can start uh going through and reading the names. And I've asked a couple of council members uh to help me with the stories. One of the things we realized is in creating this list, um, how many people truly did go above and beyond uh to help the city uh during the storm. And um, you know, uh, as much as we want to recognize them and 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 try to figure out a way to to thank them and reward them for their kindness um and their hard work and their resilience and perseverance. Um, we knew that also just having the name read was important to them. So I will go ahead and start. It's about fifty-three names. We'll break a couple of times for a few uh stories. But please understand that each one of these names comes with an amazing story um of what, of determination to help their fellow neighbor and their colleagues and the citizens uh of our city and citizens outside of our city uh during the storm. Uh, but to start, I will start off the top with our uh Public Works Director, uh Harper Wilder. Uh, the Public Works crew uh was just really, this is where they shined. Um, and you know, really just Harper uh was able to navigate so much. But Harper worked every single day uh throughout the uh the storm, including both weekends, coordinating numerous activities and offering direction uh for the water division as they were trying to prioritize and and plan uh uh an attack on protecting our water supply. Uh, Harper also uh towards the end had a really great idea uh to get us um the water well at Hayes uh High School. Uh, this was critical during that time. We weren't sure uh what we were going to do about water, but half our city didn't have water. And the other half was running critically low and we had a boil notice. Uh, so in the matter of a few hours, uh, we were able to uh get that idea off the ground. And Harper and his crew, with the help of many volunteers, were able to start distributing water. Uh, along with his crew are Alberta Castillo, Abel Serna, Adrian Gonzalez, Andrew Herr. Now, let me also apologize if I butcher any names. My last name is Koch spelled K-O-C-H. And I probably have someone say it correctly to me, how I pronounce it, one out of a hundred times. So uh, I apologize if I butcher your name, but understand I live with a butchered name, uh, so please forgive me. Next up, uh, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Rizzo to tell us a story about um Police Dispatch and April Machado.
So April Machado is TCO Lead Dispatch. On the week of February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, the new CEC had to be evacuated twice. During one of those times, Lead Machado was answering calls from a backup center of phone and working the police radio, all while out in the cold temperatures to relocate to a new location. Lead Machado was committed to continuing service to our citizens regardless of her status of the center or herself. Lead TCO Machado came in on her day off, the morning after the first evacuation to ensure the dispatchers were all operational as possible and then navigated the icy roads home. Sorry, it's a little small. Shortly after arriving at her residence, the second evacuation occurred. And Lead Machado immediately left her home and responded back to the center to assist. Lead Machado slept at a hotel throughout the week, working through her days off to ensure the center was staffed and operations could continue. In the event, staff members were unable to make it in due to the weather. April made herself available to the needs of the division around the clock. With piece after piece of technology and equipment failing beyond our control, Lead Machado never complained and simply continued to adapt and get the job done. Lead Machado faced extreme challenges and was dedicated to leading the team by example. Lead Machado demonstrated every Kyle core value and showed she has the heart of a true public servant.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo, and thank you, uh, Ms. April Machado. We also have from the police, uh, Ashley Ferris. And um, then from Public Works, we have Austin Bertram, Austin Saucedo. From Parks, we have Benito Baria. From Public Works, we have Bo Grantam or Grantham. Public Works Call Casares, Christian Juarez. From Police, Officer Damian Narvise, which you will hear a story about later. From Public Works, Derek Turley. And then a uh great story about how um our Economic Development Department, in time of need, stepped up uh to help uh some very important people on the front line for us here in Kyle. And for that story, uh, I'm gonna call on uh Councilmember Ashley Bradshaw.
Diana Torres with the Economic Development. During the storm, the hospital reached out stating that they were in dire need of meals for their employees. The staff had been there multiple days with little to no access to food or resources since their delivery trucks had been held up due to the storm. Diana Torres started contacting everyone she had a personal contact with to find meals. She immediately got a response from Chef Mac at Papa, Chef Mac at Papa Jack's and he immediately began preparing food. While arranging delivery, Diana found out that the situation was more dire than realized with the storm impacting the majority of the hospital truck deliveries and pulled the rest of her Economic Development staff in on the effort. While Diana ran down leads, Lauren Lyons and Victoria Vargas started making calls to pretty much everyone else in the town and San Marcos. Many restaurants provided meals and several and several restaurants wanted to participate. However, either had no water or had not received their own food deliveries. That left the Economic Development Team scrambling and working through the days to secure more food. In the end, they were able to provide meals to the hospital staff of two hundred and fifty from Thursday afternoon through Saturday night.
Thank you to Diana Torres, Lauren Lyons, and Victoria Vargas from the Economic Development Team for your hard work and quick action to help uh Seton Hospital here in town. We also have Edward Sullivan from Public Works, Gilbert Creel from Public Works, Jaime Jimenez from Public Works. Uh, our great uh Chief of Police, Jeff Barnett, deserves praise, uh, also from Public Works, Jeremy Gibson, Jason Olvera, I'm sorry, Jesse Olvera, Jesse Schreier, Julie Crookston, Kim Norphy. From Police, Officer Chrissy McMillan. And then um from Public Works, uh Bobby Dotree, uh, as written by uh one of his fellow employees who had sent in a story. Uh, Mr. uh Councilmember Tobes, Tobias, would you please uh read this story out loud?
Sure. Bobby Dotree deserves special recognition for his service to the City of Kyle. Mr. Dotree lives about thirty minutes away, Cedar Park, Cedar Creek. But during the recent snow and ice event, Bobby went above and beyond the normal effort expected of an employee to get to work. Obviously, he had his own troubles. He had lost power and water at his house for several days, spent the night in his truck with his family and had to move to his father's house and had the struggle as everyone of finding food and water for everyone in his house. He had nearly escaped a disaster when he's, his truck that he was driving on Highway twenty-one spun out and lost control. But during all this, Bobby Dotree made it to work every single day. Worked on Saturday to help repair the chemical feed system and get the the plant come back in compliance. So with that, Mr. Dotree, I personally want to say thank you for your dedication and putting your life out there. I understand that the weather was very bad, but doing this for the City of Kyle, I really appreciate it. We all do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tobias. Uh, thank you, Mr. Dotree, for your service. It reflects all of uh what you do and the attitude of uh Public Works in general here in the City of Kyle. Um, we also have uh Luis Alvarez, Lucas Villardi uh from Information Technology, Marco Forte from Public Works. Marco Forte, from Public Works, Marcus Scoggins, Michael Bristol, Mike Powell, from our Police Department, Officer Philip Cleary, from our Communications Department, Rachel Sonier, and Samantha Armbruster, from Public Works, Randy Wendell, Ricardo Cisneros, Richard Juarez, from Police, Sarah Brooksfort, from Public Works, Scott Egert, Ciro Casalan, from Parks, Stacy Anderson, Public Works, Steve Ruiz, Tim Sanford, Victor Benitez, Victor Martinez, Vinnie Acevedo, Warren Christian. And from our Police Department, we also have Lieutenant Tim Griffith and Sergeant Dustin Schuler. Sergeant Dustin Schuler came in and covered shifts for his fellow officers during his time off. In doing so, Sergeant Schuler recognized that the police were going to have a food shortage because everything around us was closing. When he saw that, he took it upon himself to go out and purchase food for the week for his fellow officers who would be working several days in a row. Because of the severity of the storm, many officers on patrol had to stay in hotels around our area to ensure that they could return to work the next day. Many had families that they were away from who were trapped at home without power or water, but they still came in to help others. One great story about Officer Narvise is, Officer Narvise was supposed to be on vacation and canceled the vacation and worked eight days in a row during that time off. And it certainly wasn't time off to Officer Narvise. So we really are thankful for these lists of staff. I'm thankful for Scott, Mr. Sellers, for our city manager, for helping get this list put together. And I'm also thankful for you, Scott. So we have also asked that your name be added to this list for the recognition. To my fellow council members, I would like to make a motion that we reward our council members, I mean, our councilmembers, our citizens, no, I'm so off, our staff members with a gift card to show the appreciation for what they've done. It's something small, but, you know, it can go a long way and, you know, do something nice for them and their family. But really, there's no way to thank the staff for all that they've done. You guys really prove what you're about when we're into these spots. And this has been a wild year and we are just so very proud of everything that you guys have done. So with that, I would like to make that motion to approve a gift card in the amount of two-hundred dollars for each of our staff members on this list.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Coach, seconded by Councilmember Bradshaw, that we honor the recognition to staff in the form of the gift card as described. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mayor Pro Tim, I just want to thank you for working on this. Scott Sellers as well. I think this is a great way to recognize, is it enough? It never is, especially when you see how hard our staff worked. I was out in the night when it was cold, trying to help people as well. And when I saw our staff out there with torches trying to get the water defrosted, the ice, it was incredible to see. And at the same time, my heart went out to them because they were working in conditions that, you know, most people don't work in. And they were there every day. And that's the entire staff. That's everyone. That's our, from our hard-working Public Works to our police officers. Everybody was out there making sure that everybody was safe and they did all they could for our residents. I just can't thank them enough.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All those favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Congratulations. All right. Next up, we are doing a George Washington Day proclamation. We have Mr. Stu Hoyt here coming to receive this proclamation. Would you like to come forward? At the podium, or you can face the audience, or you can face the council, either way, any way you'd like to do it. All right. Whereas the United States of America was established following the War of Revolution from seventeen-seventy-six to seventeen-eighty-three, a war won through the brilliant and courageous leadership of George Washington, revered father of our nation. And whereas George Washington, who lived from seventeen-thirty-two to seventeen-ninety-nine, mobilized a Continental Army and led the American colonies against the most powerful country in the world, finally defeating the British at the famous Battle of Yorktown, Virginia. And whereas this revered founder of our nation resisted the efforts of many supporters to make him a king or dictator, instead using his influence and power to support the creation and adoption of the Constitution of the United States. And whereas George Washington was elected as the first President of the United States, serving two terms of office from seventeen-eighty-nine to seventeen-ninety-seven, and through his devotion, wisdom and vision, became the exemplar of distinguished leadership for all future presidents. And whereas the William Hightower chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution and the local DAR chapter of a cosponsor wishes to encourage all citizens to recognize the epochal communication, contributions of George Washington to our nation by celebration and celebrating his birth on Monday, February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, which we had to postpone. I apologize for that. So I'm reading. Do you have any remarks?
I think it's important for us to understand. You talked about simple employees giving their lives to get the city through a traumatic time. George Washington did that for thirty-five years. And the downside is, through an act of Congress in nineteen-sixty-eight, his birthday was eliminated from our calendar. There are only seven states that recognize George Washington's birthday independently of Presidents' Day or Presidents' Week. Texas is not one. We are working to change that. And I want to thank the Kyle City Council for helping me to put forward that proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyt. Anybody have any remarks? Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have the Kyle Area Senior Zone presentation, Mr. Larry Simone.
I'd like to do a quick introduction, Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Rizzo.
Tonight, I have the privilege of sponsoring a group in Kyle that's important to our community. But too often, we don't hear much about them. And that is the Kyle Seniors, or in particular, the Kyle Area Senior Zone, or CAS as we've grown to know them. This month, CAS celebrates its fifteenth year gathering our seniors in the Old City Hall for fun, education, trips, meals, crafts, music, playing old Texas socialization. My old mom and her church friends are members of the CAS and always look forward to the meetings with their friends and getting involved in the activities. Tonight, the current president of CAS, Larry Simone, will give us an update with a short presentation on where they have been and their path ahead. As a council, I ask you to sit back and listen to the presentation and maybe think of your own parents and grandparents as seniors and how we, the city, can become more engaged with seniors. I personally believe CAS has been an admirable asset to Kyle, but now needs to move into a necessary phase of our city grows with many senior parents and grandparents arriving and many of us elected officials as we reach those senior zones. I'd like to present Larry Simone.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. Mayor Mitchell, city councilmen, city councilpersons, Mr. Scott, viewers over fifty-five and viewers, members here, under fifty-five. Good evening and thank you for being here. First and foremost, I want to thank you on behalf of the seniors that your staff supported us with great comfort during our recent snowstorm. And I want to thank you also for the jobs you do. Two was on a board other years ago and I know the jobs you pay. I know the hours you keep. So I do thank you personally. I'm here tonight to talk to you about our seniors. Can I take my mask off?
Yes.
I can't. I'm going to talk to you about the seniors. I don't represent all the seniors in Kyle, but I do represent the Kyle Area Senior Zone or what you're going to hear called CAS. Now, today's seniors, ten thousand a day, baby boomers are retiring. Today's seniors are retiring younger, healthier, wealthier, college-educated, skill-bound, tech-savvy, they give back and they vote. You may remember seniors and our grandparents from the past sitting in rocking chairs and rocking. And here's our rocking chair and...
Can you put it forward a little bit?
But that's not true today. So today, I have three members, if you'd come up, part of our organization at Kyle Area Senior Zone. They do not use rocking chairs. These three ladies, Nancy Rosemary and Sybil, their backs are hurting. They probably dance eight days a week, seven hours a day. So tonight, they're going to show you what the new seniors, our modern seniors, do when they're not, or never sitting on a rocking chair. Take it away, Sybil. Okay, now that I have your attention, thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. We have about a hundred of those people that like to dance. Yeah, right, correct. So tonight, for the benefit of the new council members, I'm just going to give you a little overview of CAS. I was here two years ago and I gave an overview of what we were doing. And at that time, we've done a lot. So about two thousand and six, some seniors in the Kyle area were looking for a place to hang out and they formed a corporation called the Kyle Area Senior Zone in two thousand and six. They're a five-oh-one C nonprofit corporation. From there, they named it the Kyle Area Senior Zone because they wanted to join members from around other towns. And that's why a lot of people say, why'd you call it a zone? Because they're looking for more members. They got the corporation approved in two thousand and ten. They were looking for a facility in the Old City Hall across the street, which we call Krug. And Penny Krug, we named none of her late belated husband. She was a president of CAS as well. They said they would try to help to renovate it and they got some seed money. And the city came up and said, we'll renovate it. And they did, I think, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar job. And we've been there for fifteen years. And I want to say on behalf of the thousands of seniors that passed through there, thank you, city, for that time. You've been paying our electric bill, gas bill, water bill there for many years. We lived in our own little silo, trying to do our thing and not bothered too much, which have been gracious to us when we called upon you. And we want to thank you. We are at our fifteenth anniversary, or we could say our fourteenth, because last year, we really didn't do much. So we really have fourteen years. If you haven't been there, it's a ballroom. It's about the size of this place. It's very small. When a lot of people come, they'll say, this is so beautiful and gorgeous. But it's just a ballroom. There's not a lot of other things you can do unless you break out. We do dances, lunches, activities. We've had some cruises. We've done some exercises. Meals and Wheels works out of there. And we've done a lot of community projects in there. We ended up, we have about eight hundred members. During COVID, we did a data dive of all our members because sometimes seniors pass away. We don't know that. We did a data dive with our vice president and her family and they found we have about eight hundred solid members that still are active. We don't see them all, of course, but that's a good number for that. Our only funds right now is from Hayes County. We get from the Tobacco Fund of nineteen-seventy-six. We get a thousand dollars a month. And we use that for nutritional programs, mainly meals and so forth. Just last year, since we didn't have a lot of meals going out, we went and upgraded our technology to touch tone everything with little fob. So if we ever come back one day, we don't have to touch a pen. So we used that money and they approved it. It's been very good. But something significantly happened when I took the presidency in two thousand and nineteen. Scott and the Parks Manager, Kerry, at the time, asked me and the board if we'd like to go down one mile from here to Lake Limebarger, which is above Lake Kyle, on Creekside Drive and look at five acres that was tagged for parkland. And we said, we sure like to go look. Well, we went there and as we were there on this beautiful property, we saw the ducks landing on the pond and we heard the children from nearby Tobias School in recess. And we said, this is heaven on earth. Property on a lake in Kyle? This is, we just died and went to heaven. So Scott said one thing. He says, you guys can lease it from us. You'd have to raise the money and build it. And whoa, you know, we're not skilled in that as seniors sometimes. But we took the offer and we looked at it. In doing that, we, I guess I should be pushing the shit. In doing that, we worked on our vision statement. And just in our vision statement alone, we said, we want to be world-class. Now, when you say world-class, that's big money. We understand that. But the thing is, we want to reach a goal. We won't reach it yet, probably, but we at least want to say, especially for younger people coming up to be seniors, how can we build this center for the future? And our mission statement alone, we said, we want to be a one-stop center. If I could tell you the story for the last two years of being the president, of people calling me with problems and issues and where can we go for social security, where do we get this? We're scattered. Just in COVID alone, you can't imagine the calls we got. They're looking for a one-stop shop. And maybe all cities are, but I know, just in my experience, we need one phone call, one place that they can go. And this is what we want to create. This was in our vision statement. We formed a building committee. Our building committee, when you draw from volunteers, it's tough. You don't know who's going to sign up. We have a president named Lead Duran, who retired from the city of Austin, project manager with over twenty senior centers. He's a friend of our chief of staff, Kerry. We have another lady who's on it, who ran senior centers for thirteen years with programming, Betty Conley. We have another lady who retired from the college, Texas State, with thirty years of grant writing. And then we have another lady, Cynthia Bentley, who just got to the city a couple of years. She's a fireball with nonprofits and she's been helping us. So really, we formed a great team. In doing that, we met with the university because those people teach people how to do parks, recreation and senior centers. We took a master's degree program course, one of our members, just to find out what's going on and listen to what's happening with senior programs through the college. We've had town hall meetings. We've had surveys. And finally, we reached our way to St. David's Foundation. We know there's a lot of help out there for senior centers. And we said, what's out there? Through the help of the Area Agency of Austin, we found out that we can get St. David's to help us. Well, St. David's will help you. They don't drop money on you. The first thing they do, they say, is we're going to send you a consultant. They let us interview a consultant. And we have a consultant who is very special. Her name is Brenda Coleman Beadie and she's probably watching tonight. She's guiding us. And one thing she says, feasibility study, guys, and business plan. And we're down that journey right now. Our feasibility plan is just about done. Finally, we did, we benchmarked seventeen different centers. I'm from the old school where my last career field was. I'm not going to build something or look at something until I see how other people are doing it. We went to seven centers, senior centers in this area. Some were run by cities. Some was run by private institutions. And we said, let's model what they got and take it back into our building committee and see what we want and don't want. Finally, we went to a chamber of Congress meeting. We met retired, not retired, some retired architects, Steve Butler, who followed me in this presentation. And Steve said he would like to see what we got and perhaps work with us. Steve since has worked with us for almost two years and he's also a member of CAS and he'll show you his display tonight. The city manager and staff said, you guys get going and work with the city as you got questions, which we had lately. Thank you for your staff that supports us and guides us a little bit. We don't have that background as seniors in doing this, but we're using the help and tools that we can. And finally, I'd like to make one appeal tonight that whatever we do, the cities we visited, the parks and recreations really had their hand in the senior programs. And our parks... And our parks and recreation, people have been wonderful. Kerry's helped us a lot, and Mariana, but we'd like to leave tonight with saying, could you consider, please, maybe staff them up so they can work with us? We need your guiding hand to go forward. When it's all sunned on, it's all about the money. We got it. Who's got the money? Well, we know we have some donors. We have some lifelong members that are stepping up to say, we'd like to see what you got, and we'd like to donate. We haven't got the commitment yet. We know there's fundraising campaigns that can happen. There's foundations like St. David's. We know it's not easy just to say, drop it on you. They want to see what you're doing, what you're all about. When our consultant came to us, she says, before I can see you, I want to see your last one-year records, of financial records, your meetings, your minutes, your bylaws, and so forth. And she did, and she says, you guys are doing good. So we know there's qualifications to get a foundation. Grants, same way. We know in Buta, there's 12 grants, and they have a senior center that's a private entity. But grants are out there. We found in the last couple of years, veterans will call us and say, we want to do things, but we don't have a building. Could we share with you? We did cuts for kids a couple of years ago. 300 kids come through. They wanted our facility, which is yours, but the city, you know, gives us our timeframe, and we blend with them. And we want to partner with the city. We got to get closer, and I think we're reaching that point now. I'd like to end the 15-year chapter of the old CAS Krug Building across the street and say, we'd like to start our new chapter tonight. The best thought we had was Scott met with me a couple weeks ago, and he says, you ever thought about talking to the county? Well, we met with the county, but we never asked him for anything. We told him we're on a journey. He says hypothetically, you could say to the city, or to the county, who has more money than cities more often, that we have a five-acre lot on a lake, the city would like to work with the county, let the county fund it, build it, and even call it Hayes County Senior Center, since we're one mile off of 35. The county has no senior centers at this point. We'd like to be a model for them. We also learned that in some of these senior centers, they distribute food to homebound. In New Braunfels, where we met, they deliver 10,000 meals a month, frozen meals, and they get $7 from the federal government for delivering food. And they live off of that as a private entity. We know you had some bonds out there, maybe there's some residuals someday that we could possibly say, hey, maybe you can put it our way. So we don't know what our cost is, we don't know exactly what our full picture is. We'll show you a little tonight, but we're on it with funding. We know it's important. Finally, somebody told me, why don't you give a little testimony? Because we know you sit in your world where you may not see seniors or what they're doing. I visited one place in Round Rock. I walked in, $34 million city-owned senior center. I asked the lady, I says, how do you like this place? She said, it saved my life, Mr. Simone. I said, what do you mean by that? She says, I walked in here, my doctor says, I need to be exercising. I didn't want to exercise, but my friend said, come with us, our senior center has aerobics and weights and so forth. She said, it saved my life. I walked in Brenham, there was a round table. I said, what's that for? She says, we take seniors from the Brenham High School once a month, and we teach them etiquette at this table. I said, what was your occupation? She said, I was their senior, I was their chemistry teacher. She was about 85 years old. My own, in our organization, I had 20, we have 25 teachers. They said, Larry, if we get close to Tobias on this property, we would love to tutor. You know, we may be older and retired, we still got some sense in helping people and kids, and we can do that. See, but you got to remember, when you go on your vision thing, we can give back all day. I retired 10 years ago, I haven't stopped yet. I've taken a dollar, or haven't taken a dollar. I just love it. We want to continue. I don't necessarily dance all the time, but I like doing other things. Finally, someone said, Larry, one thing about senior centers, when you build them, they will come. Okay? I know the city's going big, I know we've got lots going on, we're going to do our part as seniors to work with you. We have got to have something bigger. We outgrown that hall, and we'll do our best to get there, but we just want to let you know, when you go on your conference, your workshop, that we are important. I think Mr. Ellison out there said it best to me one night when I called him, he says, CAS is going from being admirable to being necessary. We are necessary. I could tell you stories about the seniors here that need our love and support, and we will do that for them. Finally, I'm going to turn this over to Steve Butler, who's our architect, and I think he's doing some work with the city now, I'm not sure. But Steve's been out there for 30 years. As White passed away four years ago, he moved to this area, set up his business. He saw what we were doing up in our, I call it my janitors' conference room up there. He says, Larry, I've been briefed by over 100 high schools, what you guys have done, just your initial work, has impressed me, and I will do everything I can to help you and guide you. He's now a member with us of CAS, but he's also put some rendering tonight of what we got, and he's visited with us to these sites, and he's seen it. He said, I never built a senior center, but I certainly understand it. Steve says, you're not an architect unless you're driving a bulldozer, like Mr. Rizzo there, or welding, or doing woodwork, or whatever. And then he says, then you're not an architect. Steve's got that skill set, and I'd like to introduce Steve Butler. Thank you.
Mayor Mitchell, Councilman Scott. Thanks for having us today. We spent some time putting together a program on what the actual needs for the citizens, senior citizens of the Kyle area would need. We've done a lot of work together as a group to come up with what we are fixing to present to you, and we'll start right now. So what we've got here, what we're looking at, is kind of a partnership between the city of Kyle, Kyle senior citizens, and me, A&amp;E Design Group. So I've opened up my business back down here for four years ago from Amarillo, Texas. This weather is nothing to me. I've been there, done that many times, up there in that part of the country. We've done that. So, but this is a new adventure for me, moving my office, my business, my family, my, or me, I'm the family now. And I've married a woman down here that I met online. She's been great, we've had a blast. Anyway, so I've opened up business here, I've gotten some other projects with, I'm working with the Kyle, I mean, with the Hayes School District on their new administration building, and several other projects. Anyway, so with that, I will go to the next slide. So what we've got here, if you probably hadn't ever seen this before, is kind of a vicinity plan for where it's located in relationship to this building right here. You can kind of see, you go down 150, turn left, and on Creekside, Creekside Trail, Linebarger Lake's right there. And we have a site plan. What the site plan represents is the parking, the general on a five-acre spot that you are looking to lease to the CAS community. Shows a loading dock, shows, it shows the drop-off area there in the front, and an amphitheater in the back. Some of these ideas, we picked up from other facilities that we have visited. We'll get into the floor plan here in just a second. We want to be, we want to be, help the neighborhood, and we don't want to be a nuisance to them. But I think this will just accent that community over there in the Creekside. This represents the grading plan. You can see the contours. It slopes from about 10, 11 feet from one end to the other. Nice sloping site that overlooks the Linebarger Lake. This is the floor plan. Go through it. See if I can know how to work this thing. Here is, here is the drop-off point, the main entrance to the building. Turn to the right. This is a cards-playing area. All these are opened up to the... How do we erase that again? What's his name? Remembered? Nope, not that. Oops. How do we do that? Oh, yeah. Yeah, there you go. So as you enter into the facility, the offices, oh, come on, really? The offices are here. Main office, can we, will it expand? Magnifying glass. There we go. Main office, you know, will be able to watch over people entering into the building from the vestibule area. It has the reception, oh, come on, this is tricky. The reception, a secondary office, a primary office, two conference rooms, and four, that could be, that could also be... Come on, there you go. As you keep on going through the mall, I'm calling the mall this, the mall. They're wide, 30-foot wide, probably maybe best wide right here, and a T-section. So as you go through the facility, the music area, the music area, come on. This wall right here will open up. You see the grand piano that's in there. The dancers that you just saw dancing can dance all the way around, not to mention the ballroom. So the other side of the mall is a billiards area. It's elegant, it's classic, it's, you, it's kind of a place to go hang out. And as you enter into the mall, you also see, onto the left-hand side, the billiards side, the billiards. Central restrooms on both sides. Here, come on, golly, I'll get it. Restrooms, restrooms. So there's pretty well centralized, centrally located throughout the building, either, you know, on one side of left, one side of the other. This right here represents 100 feet. So we're looking at about 300 feet. Give you a scale, a football field. We're looking at about 36,000 square feet total. The ladies of the area, of the CAS, have a real love for quilting, which is represented by the quilting room. They also, on the app, which they enter in competitions, they don't want to continually take down their things, and so, but there is a lot of ladies in our area that enjoy quilting. They go competitions, which allows for competitions to be brought to this facility also, and display their, you know, their boards throughout the mall, throughout the mall. Arts and crafts. I'm sorry, still getting used to it. Arts and crafts. We have an aerobics room, we have a weight room designed in here, we have storage for the ballroom, we have a, let's get on the other side of the, we have a, we have a dining room with a full kitchen and table and chair storage. The dock area is represented right here that you saw in the here. Ducks come in, they back up.
It looks, it looks very good. It's
Am I too long?
Well, we should, we should probably move along, because I think this is a lot for any of us to try, to try to absorb.
Well, anyway, thank you for telling me that. I don't want to waste your time on any of this. So you understand that we've had, we've had some, we've gotten to this point of it, you know, we've kind of taken some renderings, you know, an idea. Here's the amphitheater, and also another possible idea for an elevation. With that said, thank you for listening, and we're glad to take it another step further. Haven't got a price tag on it yet, but it's to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I hope there are no questions, but if there are, I'm here. And I know we took a lot of time, but
Yeah, that's okay.
That's our vision. Please put that in your pocket when you go to the vision conference. Remember us, please.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, next up, presentation on Parks and Rec, annual report on upcoming programs and activities, Ms. Mariana Espinoza.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Department Director for the record. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So it is an honor to be able to present to you the Parks and Recreation Department's annual outcomes. I'll present some highlights from this past year, as well as upcoming programs and events that we are working on. As an overview, the Parks and Recreation Department is made up of four divisions. Our four divisions include Recreation, Park Maintenance, Trails, and Administration. The Recreation Division programs fitness classes, runs youth camp leagues, oversees athletics, aquatics, and special events. Our Park Maintenance Division maintains a total of 18 locations, including developed and undeveloped parkland and municipal grounds. And our Trails Team is responsible for the construction of nearly 15 miles of trail, as well as maintaining already constructed trails, undeveloped parkland, and new parks along the trails. Our Trails Team also leads the department's initiative in becoming a Keep Texas Beautiful affiliate. Our Administration Division oversees our department rentals of the Krug Activity Center, also known as Old City Hall, athletic ballfields, the Ash Pavilion, and park and pavilion rentals. As with all departments, the Parks and Recreation Department responded to COVID and made adjustments in programming, events, and services. Parks closed all five city playgrounds and assisted in fencing off 18 playgrounds in Kyle neighborhoods and schools as requested. The Parks Department assisted with picking up hand sanitizer from local distilleries, delivering tables and hand sanitizers to Kyle gas stations, and made rounds daily, twice a day, to ensure that the gas station hand sanitizer bottles were full. In addition, Parks staff monitored the parks every hour to encourage social distancing, no large gathering, and sanitized playgrounds. The Trails Team worked to get the segment of the Plum Creek Trail that connects Waterlea Park to Lake Kyle parked, constructed, and open to the public. Administration staff helped out in all areas of the department with sanitizing efforts and specifically assisted with many inquiries regarding rental reservations. The Recreation Team made adjustments to events and programs to either be virtual, drive-through, or limited capacity. Unfortunately, due to COVID, the city pool did not open, and summer camp was only able to be held one week. However, our Recreation Division, along with the entire Parks staff, were still able to create many memorable moments for 2021. The most recent was our holiday events. Due to COVID, the annual Santa's Arrival on the Square event was not held. Instead, Parks arranged for Santa to make 135 virtual visits. Not only did Santa make virtual visits over a three-week period, he also made drive-through visits around town over two weekends, joined by his elves and city staff. The excitement was to be remembered. When COVID first hit and the annual Easter extravaganza was canceled, Parks staff did not let COVID ruin Easter fun. The Easter Bunny made 100 visits to children and dropped off basket-filled eggs to doorstops and waved through windows. The Easter Bunny delivered 40,000 eggs to Hayes Nutrition Program to be handed out with the free lunches. The annual Founder's Day Parade was held virtually with 40 entries, and the much anticipated Ash Pavilion opened, making ash cranes make a wish dream come true. Halloween fun was held as a drive-through circular cruise at Greg Clark Park, in which over 500 vehicles drove through, and staff rang in the New Year with the annual polar bear splash. bear splash. City Square Park was again decorated for the holiday season. The tree lighting ceremony was held virtually with the assistance of the Communications Department and our mayor. The lights display included a new ribbon Christmas tree, as well as additional lights to Old City Hall. Looking ahead to our 2021 holiday lights, Park plans to increase holiday decoration along Main Street and City Hall, add more lights and light displays, along with creating many photo opportunities. Our administration staff includes two, two staff. Our administration staff escorted the Easter Bunny while delivering baskets and were the two staff that turned the City Square gazebo into a favorite location for taking holiday photos. They assisted recreation staff with coordinating upgrades to the Steeplechase volleyball court, and even with COVID restrictions, the administration staff coordinated over 250 facility bookings and processed over 1,000 Park invoices. They also completed a series of seven trainings. Our maintenance staff mowed 3,750 acres, removed an approximately 40,000 pounds of trash, spent 3,500 hours per person mowing, and over 100 hours removing graffiti. Our trails team not only constructed the trail segment from Waterleaf Park to Lake Kyle Park, they now also maintain the new Cool Springs Trail, Button Park Wildflower Loop, and additional undeveloped parkland. There are currently six locations that are popular for walking, running, biking, and hiking, including the Plum Creek Trail, Steeplechase Park, Greg Clark Park, the Button Wildflower Loop, and Cool Springs Trail. There are no words to really express how I feel about the Park staff's efforts this past year. They have stepped up and risen to the challenge and displayed the Kyle car values with pride. Park Maintenance Technician Benito Pareda competed in the state maintenance rodeo that the Texas Recreation and Park Society hosts. Former Park Maintenance employee and now Environmental Service employee Claudio Cortino went on to qualify for this year's state competition. Our summer camp staff was prepared for 11 weeks of camp fun. Camp was modified to ensure a safe experience for all, such as including sanitation stations. However, when camp was canceled due to COVID, staff stepped up and helped wherever needed. Parks help in all areas of the city, including helping to put up the city tree at City Hall, the Christmas tree at City Hall. Summer camp staff and admin staff help work with the food bank distribution, and when neighborhoods call seeking assistance with fencing playgrounds, Park staff assists. Our staff remains active in the professional Texas Recreation and Park Society organization, and our very own Michelle Jones represented Kyle Parks this year with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s tribute. Park staff made improvements, including restriping lots, maintaining entryways, and maintaining park grounds. Lake Kyle Park received new playgrounds surfaced in this year, and the new Button Creek Park and Trailhead was open. Looking ahead, we have new programs being implemented this year, including a new spring break camp, a wildlife explorers program, and youth hockey league. New events sponsored by Parks include skate nights at Ash Pavilion, a chili cook-off, and July is Parks and Recreation Month Fun. Trails will continue to be built along with adding interpretive signage. This month, we will continue to register for summer hockey league and summer kickball league, and we will host the annual adult fishing tournament next weekend, and at the end of the month, the Easter Trail Hop. We are excited to bring back Market Days, movies in the parks, and we look forward to another great year. The Parks and Recreation Department would like to thank each of you for all your support at Parks, and we look forward to the rest of 2021. If you'll have any questions.
Thank you, Mariana. Does anybody have any feedback for Mariana? Cusfer Rizzo.
Mariana, I just want to thank you and your team for all you did this past year during COVID. The parks proved, and trails proved to be very important. Thank you all for maintaining those and keeping those up throughout COVID. I want to also talk about the trailhead signs that you presented. Those looked wonderful. I liked the renderings. I want to thank Commissioner Inglesby for helping with, fund some of that, so just wanted to mention that as well, but thank you for all and your team do. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Cusfer Tobias.
If you go to any of these parks, ladies and gentlemen, and see how clean and well-kept they are, it's because of this department right here, and we're very proud of it. And so I want to thank you, Mariana, for your teamwork and all that, for all your employees out there, keeping up with, keeping the areas clean, trash-free, and so forth during COVID and other things, and I'm really looking forward to the fishing tournament next weekend. So we're very excited about that for continuing these events for the citizens. Thank you.
She's doing a good job.
Yes, she is. They're doing awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mariana.
Thank you.
All right, next up, presentation on citywide trail system. Go ahead, Scott.
Mayor, Council, Scott Seldes, for the record. I will try to be somewhat expeditious in this presentation. We have talked about the citywide trail system for years now. It's been part of Parks Master Plan. It's been part of multiple budgets, and we have dedicated staff to it in this and the prior budget year, and we are actively pursuing a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant. So I just wanted to give an overview to the council on where we are and next steps. And I've got a couple of representatives who are going to share the podium with me through this presentation from the Great Springs Project. With that said, we have been surveying our citizens on the importance of a citywide recreation trail for the past five years. You can see that originally the quality-of-life initiatives were taking somewhat of a backseat to more public health, safety, and welfare, but lately, they have been skyrocketing in importance, and we recognize and feel that and know that this year, with the additional questions, we'll see similar results. We have worked well over the past several years with Great Springs Project and others on the Emerald Crown/violet crown trail system. And this is a little hard, but I'm going to do my best with the cursor here. It doesn't really show up too well. You see the end of the violet crown trail, which comes out of Austin, begins the Emerald Crown Trail, which comes through Buta, Kyle, and San Marcos, and you can see a couple of loops. This is the Kyle/Buta loop of the Emerald Crown, and then the Kyle loop, Kyle to San Marcos loop. And what you'll notice with that loop is what we have really been focusing our time, intention, and budget on, which is from the Blanco River to the west, through the city, matching up with a little tributary to the Plum Creek, then to the Plum Creek after it goes under the interstate. Following the Plum Creek, you won't see this here, but a portion of that continues east through a subdivision that has yet to be constructed. And then this is the Cool Springs Trail portion, which ultimately comes down Canyon Run 158 and into San Marcos. So it's a very ambitious, very exciting trail network for our citizens and quality of life. With that said, I would like to introduce our partners with Great Springs Project who have helped plan the violet crown and emerald crown portion, and we'll invite them to the podium to talk for a little bit.
Mayor, Council. Thank you all so much for giving us a chance to, to be here with you. I'm Gary Merritt with Great Springs Project. This is Leader Coryz Malampe, also with Great Springs Project. We're joined virtually by another one of our team members, Jason Reyes. He's in North Carolina right now, but he has expertise in public engagement and public participation in, in trail projects and parks and open space projects, and is helping us with all of our work. We work along the corridor between San Antonio and Austin with, with cities and counties, nonprofits, people that are interested in parks and open space. Our job is to, to listen, understand, and be good partners, and to, to work with you on what's important to you, what is unique to your community, what your community wants and needs, and then figure out how we can help to provide resources to help you do the things that your people are asking you to do. This is, there's no one-size-fits-all, and we've been in public service before, and we know that the most important thing is what's most important to you. And so that's what we try to do, is just show up and to be a resource when we can. And our, our goal is to connect all of these trails, so there's a network of trails from the Alamo to the Capitol, from San Antonio to Austin. It's got all kinds of.
It's a big vision.
It's a, it's a big vision, but we're Texans, and there's a good reason that we should be doing this. Lots of reasons for it. You've got your reasons here in Kyle that you, you should be supporting and want to support the work that is being done, and, and we're just want to be a part of that in the resource field.
Great. Oh, I think we all certainly are. So, anything to add, Scott?
Yeah, there's, there's a few more slides here. I'll just kind of run through them here. So thank you, Gary and Lita. We'll have a chance to hear from them a little bit more. You can see, as we zoom into the Kyle portion, that basically the Plum Creek Trail segment of the violet crown in a little more macro level. Here's west from the Blanco River, just across to the, where it matches up to the Plum Creek, and then our eastern portion as it hits Waterleaf Park, and a little portion that's already been cleared and is being utilized and enjoyed by our citizenry. There's about 2,800 feet left for easement acquisition, so all things considered, with over 10 miles of trails, it's not too bad, right? We're, we're about a half a mile left of total property or easement acquisition on this whole trail segment. But you can see there are 36,000 linear feet unpaved, so there's, there's quite a bit to do from a, a trail improvement standpoint. The council may recall, those of you who are on council, and for those who are new, the city did receive a Parks and Wildlife Trail Grant. It was a $200,000 award. We matched it with almost the same amount from our park development fund. We have been working since being notified of that award amount on the, the geotech, that doing the historical survey, things like that, and just got the word that, that everything is clear and we are ready to move forward into the design and construction phase. So you can see that the funds that were included in our matching in the award for those, those fees in that phase. Now, that segment is right here. We call this the Spring Branch segment. So basically from 150 West to James Atkins Drive is basically that, that phase. So that's, that's going to be forthcoming. The reason why that's important is because we need to basically plan and match the Spring Branch portion with the overall Plum Creek Trail. We've received a, an award from the citizens, from the, the recent bond election for monies to go toward trails, and we worked with Hays County that we've talked about matching that award for eastside trails. And so we, we want to begin the design phase as well for that east side, all the eastside trail segments, again, up through Cool Springs. So with that, most of the trail will be in some sort of a design or construction phase as we move into 2021, 2022. So what does that mean for us? Well, we have questions to answer. How wide should the trail be? You know, there's a lot of technicalities here. Should it match the, the violet crown portion of the trail? What sort of recreational amenities will be enjoyed here? Are we talking small wheels like rollerblades, which really can't go on Caliche or even, you know, asphalt, loose asphalt? You know, it needs more of a widened concrete segment. Do we have multiple trails with multiple trail types along Plum Creek, for example? Parking areas, how do we build those out? Trail amenities, and you can see some of those listed that, that we want to place on, along the trail. So all these, these are questions that we would like the citizens to help us answer, and that's, again, why we've, we've asked the, the Great Springs Project to, to be our partners in this. So again, here's some pictures and some examples of what violet crown looks like already in some areas, and you can see San Marcos as well. So the, the next step that we'd like to bring forward is the public engagement process, not only the survey, but have focus groups with Great Springs Project, helping to, to navigate those with us, facilitate those at the table, and coordinate that with, with the overall violet crown. I'm going to turn it back to this last slide here to Gary or Lita.
Thank, thank you, Scott. Just wanted to pop up this slide and, and kind of give you a timeline for this work that we're engaged in now, and, and why it is we're talking about this slide with, with y'all, is that we understand, like you all know, that parks and trails, open space, it's high-value, low-cost infrastructure. It's what people want. Your surveys that y'all are going to be doing in April, we will expect that you'll, there'll be a lot of requests for parks and open space and trails there, but we still have to show the business case for this investment, tax dollars, bond dollars, public money. And so we are working on a health and economic benefits report for the trail, the extended trail from San Antonio to Austin, but also breaking it down county by county. So there'll be a Hays County portion of this that we'll be able to share and, and to provide to you as a resource, so that when you're making your decisions and when you're talking about what the public investment in this parks and open space and trails is, you can point to and say, this is why we're doing it for the city of Kyle. This is why it's important for the people of Hays County to do. We'll have that report, that, a draft of it, the economic and health benefits report by beginning of summer, so that'll be available to y'all as y'all are moving into, to your work later in the year, and then by the end of the year, with the public participation, stakeholder groups, series of meetings, we'll have the full plan for each of the communities' trails that they're working on, like yours, and then the extended trail.
So with that, our goal is to move into that public engagement phase, try to match up with that timeline that Gary just mentioned, and answer some of those critical questions about trail construction amenities. And we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Sellers of the group? Councilmember Floris Kell.
Hello, I have a question. So, this really gets me excited, because I live on 150 East, and we have nothing but highway. And so I was talking to my daughter, who's 11, and I was like, man, we need some accessibility over there. And so I thought, you know, that's text dot over there, so we have to be kind of conscious how we, how we do this. And so my daughter was like, well, why don't you just do it in the back? Like, with the trails? Because I think right now, as it goes, it goes from like, Lake Kyle all the way to Waterleaf. And I'm not sure if you guys, if that's completed. I'm not sure what that is. I'm not, this is the first time I've seen this, but it really gets me excited to know that maybe we can bring back some of like, I was born in the 70s, and, and I grew up in the 80s. We walked everywhere we went. We were not worried, like, my parents didn't worry about us. We came back right before it got dark. Not that I'm going to do that, but, but it's nice to know that we will have this as an option for transportation, you know, walking, which is great, as opposed to being on the front road, and, and that would take some pressure off, hopefully, the residents. I will say, it is only on one side. So we'll have to work on sidewalks and the others, but I'm really excited, and I'm just, I'm curious, is that, because we're going to be off of Plum Creek as well, right? So is that included, or is that already done?
So I think what you may be referring to is the Spring Branch, not Spring Branch, the, the Cool Springs section of the trail. And if you can see what we have up here, this actually connects across 150 and goes into that Cool Springs Park area. So that is part of the overall plan where those bond monies are going to go toward, or at least that's the anticipation, and then tie into Waterleaf Park, back up to Plum Creek.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Jason, up there. Jason? Yep. Jason is, is on as well, if there are any questions from trail planning. He's done a great job designing trail systems as well, so, and again, we're here to answer any questions.
Any more questions? Councilmember Rizzo.
Just one quick question for Jason. What's the best surface you've found for identifying the trail that's environment, environmental-friendly?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think one of the things you want to think about is, is the, the users and the environment. I think when you, when you talk about the user's preference, the planning work that's been done in Kyle for the Emerald Crown Trail has really identified the crushed-down surface as the preference, and I think if that's done right and it's compacted well enough, that can be very good for the environment. There's, of course, you know, less of a heat island effect with that, as opposed to paving. It's less resource-intensive in that, in that sense as well. You have to think about maintenance, you know, trade-offs with paved versus unpaved, but I think that's one thing that will help in the next coming months, when Scott is reaching out to the public and asking questions about their preferences for trail types, would be to have some information about what those trade-offs are so that people can make an educated decision. So that's the one thing that we can talk to Scott about and, and help him get some information about, you know, the different trail design options that you want to ask the public about.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
I'll just add one, just real quick. I'm sorry. Again, we met the other day on the task force, and I just wanted to say, I'm really excited to finally hear that we're planning something for our area. Robert and I know that our parks back in the day was just Old Stagecoach Road. Going to Five Mile Dam was our park and our water source for our swimming, so it's finally glad to start seeing something on paper that we can start seeing for the residents of this area. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, Emergency Cash Decisions Program, ECAP report. Ms. Shield.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, my name is Tracy Shield, for the record. First of all, just as a resident of the city of Kyle, once again, I would like to show my appreciation to all of the staff for all of their hard work. Also, happy belated birthday, President George Washington, but he's gone, so, okay. All right, last year, so of course, two weeks ago, we suffered, you know, snowbed, but over the past year, we have been dealing with the pandemic of the coronavirus. And when all of our businesses had to shut down, and we as a council and mayor had to make some very tough decisions on closing down businesses and making restrictions, it really did hurt our small businesses. Now, the federal government did initiate a Corona Relief Fund, in which they did fund counties and cities with money to help out. And one of the ways Hayes County did that was creating a awards program for small businesses in the amount of $500,000. Well, the city of Kyle, using their grant, also contributed another $100,000. And that was to also not only bolster the Kyle small businesses, but also just to, you know, help and be a kind participant within the Hayes County. Now, our money was to go towards Kyle businesses only, and once our money was spent on our Kyle businesses, they could still qualify if there was money left over in the overall So, Matt, thank you. So up on the screen is a kind of a report that was put by the committee. It was a committee of nine people, with members of the community, and then Barbara Thompson was our ECAP coordinator, and then Catherine Sobel was with People Fund, who actually administered and did all the hard work. Also included was Mark Kennedy from the county as well. Thank you. Okay, so on the total number of organizations served, and this is the amount of money that was allocated, so San Marcos businesses ended up getting $221,099. Dripping Springs Driftwood got $122,304. Buta, $109,322. Kyle, $100,004. Wimberly, $47,271. We were able to serve 14 businesses within the city of Kyle. We ended up having three phases. This actually ended up being, amazingly enough, very hard to have businesses qualify and then actually get the money out. We were expecting this to last maybe six weeks. This ended up lasting almost eight months. So we had three different phases. Phase one was primarily done by, you had to have less than 10 employees, you could never have gotten any personal, or excuse me, any funds from the government, and you had to have started your business in January of 2019. We had a total of 69 businesses apply, out of all the businesses in Hayes County, a total of 69. A lot of that was because the paperwork was just cumbersome, and the businesses felt like that took more time than the amount, the most, the maximum award could be $10,000, and they just felt that this wasn't worth it. So only 69 total in Hayes County, in Kyle, 14. For those 14, we approved six of those. Four were denied for just not qualifying at all. Two received, you know, funds from the federal government, and then one was missing documentation. So after that, we went to county commissioners and said, this criteria is not working. So we came up with a different formula, and we made it based on profits. So for phase two, actually, we ended up with 75 total applicants, 10 more for Kyle. Now, when we looked at phase two, we also brought the ones who were denied from phase one forward to see if they could qualify under phase two. Two were approved of those 10. Four were denied for missing documentation, and four, just because they had also lost money in 2019, so that difference wasn't there to show that they had a loss in 2020 as well. One of the criteria that we did change was, first of all, the business had to have started by July of 2019, so that helped some of those businesses who were newer businesses, because of course they wouldn't have shown a profit in 2019, because they're a brand-new business. So, but again, we were still a little, we still weren't getting that money out there, so we decided to change it from profit to reimbursement. And while overall, they got, I think, another 12 applicants overall, there were no more applicants for the city of Kyle. Now, one thing that I did notice is that a lot of companies were having difficulties with their paperwork. It was missing documentation, they just didn't get it in. And so I actually made, and Catherine emailed these companies to say, hey, we need this, we need that, and just wasn't getting very much response. So I actually personally called these companies and spoke with their contact, and some of them finally were able to, because at the beginning of February, we had only allocated $49,000 of our $100,000. We were like, okay, either, something's going on here. Either Kyle was doing much better than we thought, which could possibly be, you know, our businesses are very resilient, they figured out other ways to work around their losses and streamline their businesses. And that's what we also came into. We saw a lot of businesses actually streamlined their business, so they didn't lose as much, even though they had to let go of employees, it still streamlined it. And so that kind of, but that, if you'll go down a little bit, Matt, for me, to this, a little bit further down, I think, so under these observations right here. So one of the things that the committee had kind of really focused on in the overall scheme of things, it was apparent that many of these small businesses need instructions on how to manage and record their finances. That was our biggest, I think, issue. It would be valuable to follow this program with free instructions for the population to prevent potential problems with their businesses. And so one of the recommendations that I would like to make to our city council is to maybe determine some way of making a program, be it through the library, and maybe in coordination with the chamber, to offer, you know, a business class of some sort where they get the understanding of the paperwork that they have to do whenever they do have to apply for grants or apply for loans or something. These are basic forms that they are going to have to show, and a lot of our businesses, several of them, just didn't have it. The childcare industry did not take advantage of ECAP, yet continues to struggle to stay in operation. This industry is a critical key that enables residents the ability to return to work. The industry's trials are compounded by increasing administrative costs as a result of reduced child-teacher ratios and increasing health and safety supply costs and extremely thin margins. Additional targeted support is needed for the childcare sector. Yeah, we were surprised at some of the businesses that we were really expecting restaurants to apply, you know, childcare to apply, and we really didn't get those. And go down a little bit more for the next bullet point, thank you. And then the ECAP fund was successful in supporting small businesses, but citizens that are continuing to fall through the cracks are those displaced from such sectors as retail and hospitality that have no job to return to. These individuals are in need of retraining for those opportunities that do exist in Hayes County in skilled trades. Help is needed for these individuals to make this transition. So as I said earlier, you know, when the companies did streamline, unfortunately, streamlining meant decreasing their payroll and employees. So Barbara was, who is the coordinator of the committee, wanted to do this, but she couldn't be here tonight, so I wanted to step in and make sure that you guys were, you know, brought up to speed on how your money was spent, and so that the residents also knew. So, any questions?
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions for Tracy?
Just one comment, Mayor. Tracy, I did speak with one of the businesses, I did receive some help with this program. They're very appreciative and actually helped them stay above water and keep their employees. So this was a great program. They're very grateful, so thank you for your work on this. Thank you.
Well, no, thank you for the council for approving the money in the first place, so thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right, next up, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. We only had our meeting last week, so there's not been a whole lot of additional activity, but we did have some of our projects that did get a little bit done. Starting off, the Laman and Burleson, we're still trying to close those projects out, so there are project managers working with those contractors to hurry up and get them to wrap up their projects. Wendy Hill Training and Drainage Project, we're still at the 22% complete. We just got in a pay estimate, but we haven't included it in this amount yet. They're still working on the south half of Wendy Hill Road. Any paintbrushes open, but cherry wood is still closed, and the next picture will show you what's being done at cherry wood. They're installing the box covert there, so once they get that completed, then they'll open up cherry wood again. We still have to go back and refinish or finish out the surface later, so there'll be another road closure later to come back and wrap it up. South Side wastewater improvements, we did have a pay estimate, so we're up to 77%. They're still working at the driveway there by the appall facility. They're still waiting on some coating they have to do on the manholes and the wet well at the lift station, and we're still waiting for the manhole to come in for the west side of the Elliott, which starts off the Elliott Ranch project. On the wastewater treatment plant, we're at 45% complete. The contractor intends to work on Saturdays to try to catch up because of the lost time due to the recent weather that we had. He continues working on the other things that he can get to, to keep the project moving. Still no change in the schedule. We're still planning to have this project completed by March of 2022. They are working on the design for the dewatering facilities, so they're about halfway through the design on that. This just kind of shows you the impact of how big these structures are. This was back in February 20th, but this is some major infrastructure that we're building. Actually, you can see a little bit of snow still left there on that picture on the right, but like I said, the contractor's trying to get back on schedule, so hopefully the Saturday work will start catching up again. Mountain Creek Interceptor, we were able to start a little bit of work again on that, so we're about 6% complete on that particular interceptor. If you've driven by the elevated storage on Kohler's Crossing, it's got its four coats of paint, has the logo, and even though we said 63%, we were figuring they're going to submit their last pay estimate to close out the project. We still need to do a walkthrough and go through the project to double-check and make sure everything's done according to our plans and specifications. Old Post Road, the county was out there yesterday, we're starting to install the erosion controls. They actually plan to start the road closure on March of the 4th and start excavating. The Setta Ranch Roundabout is still at 95% complete. They have completed their geotech report they needed to design in the median. The developer and the contractor will be providing a proposed plan for the median. The developer is available if there's any questions for him concerning the roundabout. Paramount Stone Division, they increased that to 60%, and they still think there's about three, four more weeks for completion of that project. And available for any questions.
Thank you, Leon. See if you have any questions. Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, Leon, this is for the developer, Setta Ranch. Do we have a timeline on when we're going to cut down those coverts?
We're waiting for the developer to give us that information. If he's available, I would like for him to step up and tell us what the status is. Understood he was going to be at the meeting, but I guess he didn't make it.
Okay, sounds good. If I could get a time?
I've been sending them emails, asking them to give us a timeline, and like I said, they just got the geotech report, and they said they would get back to us as soon as they could, so I'm expecting to see the building. My recommendation is to remove that stand-up curb and replace it with a mountable curb, and of course, have a nice beefed-up section of the pavers behind it, so that's my recommendation to them, is we'll see what they come back with.
All right, thank you, Leon.
Councilmember, I can jump in on that. I actually spoke with the developer today on that. He was supposed to be on the meeting and had trouble connecting. So they will be removing that stand-up curb, they're going to be adding about nine feet of the mountable apron. Said they've got the concept ready to go, they just have to go through the design phase now, but they're moving on it. So that's the good news, is that they know what to do and they're working it.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers.
Nine feet's a lot. That's pretty good. Any other questions for Leon? Okay, next up, Consent Agenda. Motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda, items 12 through 15.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve the consent agenda as posted. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Next up, Consider Impossible Action. This item is postponed at the last meeting because of the storm, and an ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, regulating sex offender residency within the city and establishing child safety zones, amending Chapter 23 of the Code of Ordinances entitled miscellaneous offenses by adding Article 11 to be entitled child safety zones, making it unlawful for certain sex offenders to reside within 1,500 feet of premises where children commonly gather, providing exceptions to the ordinance, providing property owners from renting real property to certain sex offenders, providing penalties for violations of the ordinance, repealing ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, et cetera. Chief Barnett, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the record, Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police. As the mayor mentioned, we're bringing forward a knotted ordinance for your consideration.
Chief, we're not able to hear you. You're breaking up.
... ordinance, several weeks. All right, let's see if I can make some corrections here. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right, is that better?
Chief, can you mute your video?
Oh, yes, sir, I can turn the screen off. Is that what you're saying, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how about that, sir? Is that better?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I apologize, I'll wait for a second. So we brought this out several weeks ago at a recent council meeting where we discussed the various components of our suggested ordinance. The intention of this ordinance is to create a child- The intention of this ordinance is to create a child safety zones in our community that are around places that were identified as places where children commonly gather. And that has a definition, and it's generally places such as parks, community parks, playgrounds, swimming pools, and other places where children are known to congregate. And we have that defined in the ordinance. The version that you have before you, and I'm going to try to share my screen so that I want to try to bring up the... I apologize. I was going to bring it up and just read it as I read it along. I'll try to bring back my camera too, because I know that's a little bit odd. Are you still able to hear me with camera going?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay. So I was going to bring up and follow along, but we have the items attached. In the, in that recent meeting, we talked about our intention to create the child safety zones, and we discussed a sliding scale of distance for offenders to reside at distances beyond 1,005 feet from places that are identified as called. This ordinance is only designed to impact those.
It's not working, chief.
Not working, chief.
Yeah. You're going to need to turn your screen off and try again or get to a place where you have better signal. All right. Also, Officer Pates, maybe if you can jump in. Officer Pates, you want to go?
Yes, sir. Hold on now. Caught me off guard.
No, yeah, I apologize for that.
Mayor, I've made some adjustments real quick. Are you able to hear me now?
That seems pretty good.
Okay, sorry about that. Had several of the devices, I think, that were connected here. I'm not exactly sure what has come through clear enough or not, so I apologize if I repeat myself, but I'll try to only hit the highlights. As we brought our ordinance forward several weeks ago for public review and discussion, we brought it back to you tonight with some minor changes, things that we think it will make it a little bit more clear. And I know earlier in the evening, we had some citizens speak, and they brought forward some concerns. I think I will be able to provide them with information that they'll be pleased with because some of the information that they have heard has either changed or is incorrect about some of their points. So I'll try to cover those as well. In addition to the information that we previously discussed, we brought forward, we added to the language "medical facilities," which would not be included in the places where sex offenders would be prohibited from ordinance. And I'll just pause here for a minute to make sure you're able to still follow me.
We can hear you. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've added in the definitions section, which is Section 290 of our ordinance, we added the definition of a medical facility. And later on, as I describe the ordinance, you'll see how that is applied. This ordinance would, and this is kind of new and updated information from our last presentation. The last time we spoke, we talked about how many people, how many registered sex offenders would this impact in our community. With the new language and guidance from our legal advisors, this new draft will not impact any current registered sex offender residing in the city of Kyle. The previous language talked about people who had leases or rental agreements that would expire, and it would have an impact on those registered sex offenders upon the expiration of their lease or rental agreement. We have amended that language, and this new draft would, in effect, I hate to use the term grandfather clause, those who are currently residing in our city, as long as they remain compliant with all registration requirements and as long as they do not move. So this is basically regarding where they live today, and if they remain at that location and they remain current on all of the registration requirements, which they do, then this new ordinance would not have an impact on those individuals. A second thing that I want to highlight, because this came up last time, our ordinance does contain language that there is a burden on a person who is a landlord, a person who rents or leases property to a registered sex offender. Although it is not our intent to go after landlords and people who are unaware that they have rented a piece of property to a registered sex offender, we did offer some advice at our last meeting. We talked about how they could check the state's registry. It is online from the Texas Department of Public Safety. And we talked about how they could find the maps and how they could also contact our sex offender compliance officer, which is Officer Pates, to be certain that they are not out of compliance. But we also talked about that the real pressure in this would be placed on the registered sex offender who desires to reside or move somewhere within the city limits of Kyle. Those sex offenders are required to check with our compliance officer in advance of any move. So if we have someone from outside the community that is a registered sex offender and they desire to move to our city, they are required to meet with our compliance officer to make certain that they have met all of our local requirements. At that time, our compliance officer could check the map, check the address on where they intend to move, and help provide them the guidance that they would need to select a residence that would not be in violation. If they fail to do that, they could be violating their probation, their parole, or requirements of their sex offender registration, which is much more serious and could actually land them back in jail. Don't forget that we will have a map based on the distances that you provide, and I'm not sure if I'll be able to share them, but I'll see if Matt can help me since I'm having some of these issues. But we have provided you maps that include distances of 500 feet, 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet, and 2,000 feet, so that you could get an idea of what kind of impact and area of coverage that provides to our community. We would post that map publicly. It would be available online for anyone to see at any time. We did talk about, I did mention to you that we changed the requirement for it to affect anybody that would be experiencing a lease or rental agreement expiration. That's no longer the case. We did add, because we added that definition of a medical facility, like I mentioned early on, we added an exemption. If someone is placed in a facility for medical care, then we would certainly not want them to be held in violation. We would certainly want them to get the medical care that they need. And we're really talking about inpatient or long-term residential requirements for somebody getting medical care. So we've added that for your consideration. Speaking about some of the comments from the community earlier tonight, our section, so that can be specific in case I need to see it, Section 23.294 under affirmative defenses. In our new section, which is now relettered as Letter E. as in Edward, it says, "The person required to register as a sex offender was a minor when he or she committed the offense requiring such registration and was not convicted as an adult." This is an exemption, or it would not be applicable to that person. So I think earlier, we had somebody speak about an offense that was committed by a person when they were 15 years old. As long as that person was convicted as a juvenile and not convicted as an adult, this particular ordinance would not apply to them, if that is helpful. I want to bring out one section that we want to ask you to delete tonight because we just don't think it's useful or necessary anymore. That would be the newly lettered section as F. And I'll be specific, that's 23.294, letter F. As we've amended this, the drafts of this ordinance over time, we no longer feel that that section is applicable at this time. We also, I also heard from the community tonight that they talked about this ordinance regulating where sex offenders can go. Specifically, I think I heard schools mentioned, and I also heard some talk about Halloween, so I want to address both of those. This ordinance does not address where sex offenders can go. It does not tell a registered sex offender that they cannot go to a public school to pick up their children or participate in other events. That is not what this ordinance does. If their orders from the judge in a proper court or any other orders that would be lawful for them, those would apply, but those are not regulated by this ordinance. So I want to make sure that the people in the community that spoke earlier tonight understand this ordinance does not regulate where a registered sex offender can go. Specifically, they talked about schools. Another part, I just addressed the part about not applying to someone who was under 17 when they were convicted, as long as that was a conviction as a juvenile. And then the other, I heard comments about Halloween. There was a comment that a registered sex offender would not be able to, and I think they may have worded it, "go out for trick-or-treating or participate in Halloween." This section, our ordinance, does have a section, 23.292. 23.292 does address Halloween, but it is very specific to the residents. It does not talk about where that registered sex offender can go on Halloween, if they want to go out trick-or-treating or other places. If there are any rules or laws about that, that would be something that they would have been given from the court. Our ordinance says a child sex offender shall not, on each October 31st, leave decorations or an exterior porch light on or otherwise invite trick-or-treaters to the premises. So we're not regulating where they go and what they do away from their premises. We're talking about their house. I think that's the highlights. I apologize for the technical difficulties. I was going to show you all this. You may have on your screen here an example of a map. This one is the 500-foot buffer zone. This is, as you can see, this is focused on our places where children commonly gather, which is the parks and such that we identified earlier. We also have examples, if Matt's able to change that to the 1,000, the 1,500, and the I'll kind of pause right there. Oh, yeah, he's bringing them up. Thank you, Matt. Now you see the community with a 1,000-foot buffer. Now your example is a 1,500-foot buffer. This is the original recommendation that we had. That came from comparing cities within the state of Texas and how their ordinance is read. Generally, they were between 1,000 and 2,000 feet, and we wanted to bring something in the middle of that for you to look at. And of course, we brought all of the examples that you requested at the last meeting.
Thank you, chief. Anything more?
Yes, sir.
To add?
I don't think from my part, unless in the haste of that technical difficulty, I left something out, but I think I've covered everything that I had in my notes.
Okay, thank you, chief. Does anybody have any comments or feedback or discussion that they want to have on this item?
I was going to say, chief, thanks for looking into that. This is Councilmember Tobias. Thank you for looking into that section F for us. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Now, right now, we'll talk right now. Anyone else? Councilmember Floris Cal.
I just want to say that earlier today, when we heard the testimony from different people, it made us open our eyes, I think, in a different way to see the different situations. And mind you, this was a situation that was very near to my family. But I understand the idea of an injustice or some kind of failed legal system. And I just want to say, I work in the legal field, and I understand that. But that is for the courts and not for the city. So I feel like as a city, we got to stay out of it in the legal aspect. We can't say who's guilty and who's not. And my heart goes out to the people who are in a situation that are not, that this isn't really cover. But with that said, I also think it's a good idea that we grandfather in these people that are here. And if it affects zero people who are currently here, I guess I don't understand the problem because coming in as new people, they'll know our ordinance. And I'm not sure if you guys got an opportunity to watch the last meeting before last, we talked about this, how this all got brought up, but it was because we had an officer who spoke with a gentleman who was a sex offender, and they asked him, Officer Pate asked him, "Why are you here?" And he specifically said, "It's because Kyle does not have a sex offender ordinance." And so that's what kind of brought it up. This is not about punishment. This is about protection for our kids, for our most vulnerable people. And so I'm willing, and I understand the desire to work with the people who are currently here. And it does give me some relief that Chief Barnett said this wouldn't affect anybody. And I'm going to be honest, I would like to see it go a little bit further to where if you decide to purchase a house that you are also grandfathered in, because I didn't purchase my first house until I was much older. And so I leased and I rented until just six years ago. And we're not going to talk about my age, but we're talking about late 30s. And so I don't think, once you're here, we want to keep you here. And so I think it's probably something that maybe we can look into as far as making sure that if this is where you guys are at and you're happy and there's been no issues, that you should be able to buy a house and not just be forced to lease the same place for the rest of your life. And I do appreciate everybody who's come out. It did open my eyes to other instances. But as a city, we have a responsibility to even you guys and your daughter. And I have a daughter of my own. I have two daughters of my own, one of which was in this very similar situation. And so I get it, and I do understand it. But again, it is my job to protect our city and our residents. So I'm excited to hear from you guys, though. I hope the things that Chief Barnett has talked about has kind of lightened the situation for your situation, because I'm almost honored that you guys stayed to talk about it. A lot of people left, and I know this affected two or three different people that were here, and you guys chose to stay. And so I want you guys to know that means a lot to the people that are sitting on this dais, because a lot of people tuned out and left and changed the channel. But you guys stayed because apparently this is important to you. And so because of that, it's important to us.
Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, chief. Councilmember Rizzo, for the record, so we had a lot of powerful testimony earlier today. And one of the things I wanted to ask was, if we have somebody that's already currently living here and, you know, with rents going up all the time, can't afford the home they're renting or the apartment or whatever they're renting, they have to look for a cheaper location or more economical location, will they be considered grandfathered in?
Great question, Councilmember. The answer to that would be no. They would be grandfathered in technically on their current living residence. Once this ordinance is passed, then they would not be able to relocate in a zone that would otherwise prohibit them. So no, they're grandfathered in on their current residence only.
Can we update that? I mean, nothing is set in stone, and we're discussing it. And so my concern is, it's nine residents. And I'm assuming we haven't had any continuous issues with them. And so I think because we are in a situation where we're enacting something to make it fair, because some of these people have come across an injustice, but to keep it as fair as we can, I feel like maybe we can add something that allows people who are already here to be able to move within the city and not feel like they have to leave.
If the council so chose, that could absolutely be added. And then, well, I want to defer to our attorney just to make sure I don't speak incorrectly, but I believe we could add it here on our current list without naming them. We could do that. And the attorney may say we need to name them somehow in the motion or the ordinance. But otherwise, we know who's on our list, and we know that we could identify them. I would seek legal advice on just placing that appropriately.
So one thing we could do is, if we did go down that path, is put down, look at what their current location is from these identified areas and make sure they continue to be in that same proximity, not getting any closer, something we could probably look at. probably look at.
I, I would suggest that we, uh, this page signed, City Attorney for the Record, I would suggest that we, so, so the, the ordinances that we've looked at, um, have not had a provision in there like that you're suggesting, like you're suggesting, uh, that I've seen so far. And so what we're talking about doing is, um, it's kind of a novel provision and you're distinguishing between individuals as opposed to treating everyone the same, um, in this particular, um, ordinance. And so I, I would want to review that issue to make sure that you're not opening yourself up to a challenge to the ordinance, um, by adding this provision since it's novel. These types of ordinances have been, uh, were challenged quite a bit before the legislature put some laws in place that made clear that cities could adopt regulations like this. But, um, I'd caution against putting something in that hasn't been tested by the courts because that may open you up to some challenge. So I'd, I'd want to check on that before we adopt that additional provision.
Thank you, Paige.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brett Cho.
Okay, so, um, in complete transparency here, I was ready to pass this, that presentation. Um, but I'm glad that we got the time to kind of think it over. I was, I was wearing my mom hat and I had to set that aside and put on my council hat. So I wanted to be as objective as possible and really do my due diligence with this because it's a big deal and it's going to, you know, impact and deter people's futures. So, um, so I did that. I, sorry. I really did some internal reflection and I also did some research and probably most importantly, I did some community outreach. And with that, um, I had two people from all of the emails, Facebook messages, and social media posts in opposition of this ordinance. Um, everybody else was in favor and they were in favor of the 2,000 feet rather than the 500 or 1,500. And I just want to piggyback off of what you've, I'm sorry, Councilmember Floris Kell, sorry, um, has said, that I, I am empathetic to, to those people who have, um, been wrongly accused and who have found themselves in these situations. But I do agree with her in saying that that really is between the offender and the courts and it is not between the city, um, and the offender. And I think that those rare instances are not, do not merit the opportunity to make Kyle, um, a little bit safer. Oh, I'm sorry, and I had a question. Um, so for the ordinance, let's say that if the ordinance does pass and we have the, one of the proposed, um, distances in the future, if someone is living in a residence and a, uh, school or a park is built, how will that impact them? Will they have to relocate or will they take precedence because they were there first?
No, that's a great question. We have a section under 291 residency requirements that talks about if they are situated prior to the development of a park or other place where children commonly gather, then it would not, uh, be applicable to them, that they would not have to relocate.
That's all. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, anyone else wish to speak?
I-
I have some thoughts. Um, I, I have quite a few thoughts on, on this as well. Um, so I'm just, to be clear, on the side of the ordinance, I'm for the ordinance. I'm also very, very much for 500 feet as opposed to 2,000 feet. And I'll tell you why. And at the end of the day, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll just vote and we'll decide. But, uh, it, it has a lot to do with precisely the, the question, I think, that we're, we're wrestling with it, which is just if, if we have people who live here and we're trying to give them a break, but we're giving them a break sort of unprecedented of not wanting to move them around, but also we're recognizing that we want to do something as it relates to the, this ordinance to, to put in protections that we realize aren't there. Like, I think the Halloween is, is perfect threading, the needle, the way it's written here as opposed to elsewhere. Cause I've seen Halloween ordinances that I thought were incredibly, um, draconian and unfair. Uh, so I think this is a, a pretty good, a, a pretty good way to, to navigate that. But if the idea and the goal is to keep, uh, sex offender, if we're just being honest, and the idea and the goal is to keep sex offenders away from our parks and our schools, there's a way to go about, uh, accomplishing that. In other words, trying to keep them, uh, removed, more removed within our city than our children. Uh, then if we want to do, my, my thought is if somebody currently lives that close to a school, I kind of want them to move. And I don't mean any individual. I mean, which wherever they are, we don't know all of them, but in principle, I, I don't have a lot of relationships with sex offenders, so I don't know. So I kind of view them the same as everyone from a philosophy standpoint of saying, based on the whole and, and the community's comfort level, it makes a lot of sense to make sure that they're out of line of sight, that they can't be in their home and staring at a place where children gather. That's a, that's a sense, that makes sense to me. That seems humane and like a, a way for us to protect ourselves. But to then push that boundary and, and say that we're going to create a map in such a way that they're now being pushed all the way out of the city and they don't really even have a realistic place within any neighborhood to live, then we've changed the discussion altogether. And we've gone from, we're trying to protect our children to we're trying to kick a certain group of people who have rights out of our city. And at that point, I think we go, uh, I think we go too far. So my thought would be to say that, to not worry too much about the people that live here, but make sure we get the, the spirit of the ordinance right, which says there's a grandfather rule, which takes care of that idea of like, hey, I wasn't aware of this when I moved here. But there's also a, a closer rule that says you can't live close to a, a, a park, you can't live close to a school. But if we say more than 2,000 feet out, then every sex offender with children, the, the clock's on. And if there's something goes wrong with their house and they gotta move, we have to try to test legal theory to keep from actually expelling them out of our city based on this ordinance. And I just think that's too far. I don't think the data supports that we should, and I just, it, it wouldn't work. Cause if we do it, then San Marcos does it, then Buta does it. Where do they live? It's very expensive to live in the county. And it's just, it, it just doesn't work as a form of civil, like a, a way towns and cities and suburbs should operate. I think we should allow for them to live here and make sure that they aren't able to live close to parks, uh, or schools, especially within line of sight of, of a home. Uh, and that also reduces the number of properties that are available. It puts downward pressure on that ratio of, so we keep, we're not pushing on the higher end of the ratio of how many can live here. Uh, that would be, that would be, um, my proposal. So I at least wanted to, to make that pitch. The 1,000, if you look at the map, even if you go to 1,000, it's, it's pretty, pretty restrictive. And then it's just little spots within the city that you can go. And then at that point, it's a really strange, it's a really strange ordinance. We might as well go to 2,000. Those are my thoughts. So, uh, Councilman Floris Kell, if you want to, uh, jump back in, go for it.
Um, so I personally received an email asking not to minimize the 1,500. So my willingness to go to 1,000 is actually going against what one of my residents asked me to do. With that said, I also believe 1,000 is a good medium. I don't know, 500 is good. Um, but I think 1,000 is a good medium. And it, it's just one of these situations, we're in a bad spot. Like, I, I felt comfortable saying that you guys are grandfathered in, you guys will be okay. Because I hope as parents that you as well don't want sex offenders living near you guys. Um, I, I do have a quick question for Chief Barnett. I thought at some point it was going to be aggravated sexual assault of a minor, or is this just sexual, like, what does this pertain to? Just somebody who has been, uh, found guilty of, of like, um, sex with a minor? Cause that's, that's pretty general. I think, and that's kind of scary, I think, because at 18, if you sleep with somebody who is 16, that could cause a real issue.
So I, I'll try to first answer by our definition, and I may ask Officer Pates so that he can kind of expand upon what he discusses with his sex offenders that come in for registration. But our definition of a child sex offender, and that's the, this applies to, means a person who's required to register on the Texas Public Safety's Sex Offender Database because of the condition involving a minor. So it does involve a criminal conviction in a court. It does mean that their victim was a minor. Um, and there are various types of offenses that that could have affected, and I'll kind of defer to Officer Pates for a minute in case he wants to add anything. But we are talking about a convicted sex offender where the victim was or was intended to be a minor. Officer Pates?
Yeah, so that, that, uh, you know, that encompasses, um, a wide range of things. You have someone who has pictures of children, you know, child pornography, um, or you have, uh, the situations where a lot of them have had some type of sexual contact with a juvenile. Um, and all of those, um, are felony crimes, um, and they would be registering in the state, uh, the state database. So, you know, if, if you want to get more specific in those, we can, um, but that's the range we have is, is anything from having, uh, pictures of children to doing more with them. And, uh, this doesn't affect someone if the victim, if a sex offender, if their victim was an adult, which we have a few of those as well.
Councilman Brett Cho.
Um, just to answer what you were saying. So in my research, I found that the legal age is 17 in Texas and there is a three-year age gap difference. So if you're 17 and you have a partner that's 14, that would still be considered legal in the eyes of Texas and not an assault against a minor. Or no, I'm sorry, 17 is the legal age of consent. So, but there is, they allow for a three-year age gap. It's the Romeo and Juliet clause or laws or something of the sort.
All right, I just, this is-
You're saying that-
Go ahead. I'd love to hear from-
I was just gonna get that clarification. So you're saying at the oldest, uh, a minor of 16 with someone 19 would be what you're stating?
That's my understanding, but please, Officer Pates, correct me if I am incorrect.
You're not incorrect. Um, it, it would, you know, it comes down to the whole picture of, of everything that happens when, let's say, the parent of the 16-year-old wants to file against the 19-year-old. Would criminal charges be pressed? Of course they would. You know, we'd have to do our due diligence. But when it gets to the court system, the court system's going to look at the totality of circumstances. Is it, were these, you know, two people dating for a while and then it led to something more? Or did this 19-year-old just jump and, uh, you know, had some relations with this 16-year-old without her consent? There's two, uh, two opposite sides of the spectrum there. So that 19-year-old, if that's the case, would absolutely be convicted. But if it's the, the opposite of relationship, the chances of that being a conviction are, I believe, would be a lot less because of the Romeo and Juliet clause.
We, we can, we can go ahead and make the motion if we want to go on 1,000. I'd like to hear from, if anyone else has opinions about the map, because what constitutes a, a sex offender is not really the question at hand. It's just how close to the parks do we want them? If, is, assuming everyone supports the ordinance, in, in which case, you know, we can do it however we want. So, Councilman Brett Cho.
I just want to touch on, on your dispute regarding the 500, because I know that here and Kyle specifically, there are a lot of neighborhoods that have students walking through them to and from school every single day. And while it's not necessarily a place where children gather, it is definitely a place where you could consider a child to be vulnerable in the aspect that we are discussing.
And can I also say, this is not, you can't go to a park. This is you can't live by a park. So I understand the need to want to still live a normal life and take your kids to the park and, and to, uh, trick or treating. Um, and they're not like, like Chief Barnett said, they're not telling you that's not what you can do. It's more like you can't live near there. So, I mean, that's a tough call. I feel like 500 feet is enough for a true offender, if, if that, if that's fair, you know what I mean? You guys are sitting in front of us, and so I take into consideration your situation, but there are, I hope you guys at least understand, there are a lot more severe situations and that's what we're trying to prevent. We're trying to make sure that we keep our kids safe. We're not trying to kick anybody out. Please know that. In my heart, I would never try to kick anybody out of Kyle. Um, what we're trying to do is to avoid future issues and situations. Um, and so we're stuck in a really hard situation with looking at you guys and knowing your situation and thinking, hey, that's probably a lot of it. And, and then the reality of, you know, true hardcore sex offenders that literally park at the park and wait for kids to walk by so they can try to entice them. So I, that we don't think that's you guys, you know, but that's a reality. And that's a reality that the city has to deal with. So I say I'm back to 1,000 feet.
Councilwoman Ellison.
Okay, um, I'd like to, I know we're trying to focus on that, but, uh, I just had a few other questions, uh, that are a little different from there. Uh, so part of the ordinance that has arrived here, we have, uh, six different whereas, uh, statements at the beginning of our ordinance. My, ask staff, uh, how we came to that language.
So-
Staff needs anybody that's employed by the city of Kyle.
Okay, so, um, we took, like I said, we, in those findings or in those other emails that you guys received that had other cities, um, and their language, we, we took all of theirs and, and, you know, kind of wanted to mirror it, mirror it, but really customize it towards what would be best for the city of Kyle. And that's where a lot of these, uh, whereas terms came from. And for the legal part of it as well.
Underst- understood. So, uh, specifically focusing on the third, whereas, uh, states the city council finds from evidence and statistical reports reveal that the recidivism rate for released sex offenders alarm, for released sex offenders alarmingly high, especially for those who commit their crimes against children. Uh, have we been presented with any data, uh, or statistical, uh, reports, uh, that show the recidivism rate being, um, and that those terms are alarmingly high?
I, I can speak from a report that I reviewed from the, it was from the Department of Justice that talked about sex offenders that are, if I'm gonna cut this off in case it's not hearing me well, that sex offenders that are treated, meaning they received post-conviction treatment, their recidivism rate was at around 11%. For those sex offenders who did not go through counseling and, uh, other forms of treatment for their criminal offense, their recidivism rate was about 17.5. And that was from the, uh, I'll get you the exact one. That's the Office of Sex Offender Registration, and I, I'll be sure I can send you that report. I'm sorry we didn't attest that.
Understood. So I guess in not knowing the rates of other crimes, I guess you're reading between the lines, you're stating that the recidivism rate for sex offenders is comparatively and relatively higher than other crimes.
Uh, Councilman Brett Cho wanted to add something. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Councilmember Ellison, um, in my research, I did find a few studies and there were some variables in the per- and there were some variables in the percentage of recidivism. It wasn't specific to sexual offenses, but it was, I think, 38% was the highest that I saw. There was also an instance recently, when I was speaking to one of the officers, where they were on a call to a drug house, and it did involve a sex offender here in Kyle as well. So that just shows that it's not limited to just sexual offenses.
Oh, you're meaning that-
No, go ahead, Councilor Ellison. I'm sorry.
So you're stating that sex offenders committing other crimes that aren't related to sexual offenses? That's what you're stating?
Yes.
Okay. So do we have any statistical reports or evidence for the recidivism rate here in the City of Kyle for sex offenders?
No, sir.
Do we keep that data at all? Or is that something that we just don't have, or that's just not something we have right now or available?
We don't keep that data. I just, all the data that I keep is just the stuff that is required by the state. I don't, I don't, obviously, there's nothing else that I push on them that needs to be done. Just stay within the lines and the guidelines that the state requires.
Understood. No, that's completely, I totally understand that. So, you know, looking at, when I vote for it, ordinance, certainly I want to make sure as much of what is stated in the ordinance is based on fact and information that we have reviewed and been able to determine in our decision-making. And so I certainly understand that Chief, you looked at some data, Councilmember Bradshaw looked at some data as well. I would have liked to have had that data available to us in order to stand by that statement as well, because that certainly made that statement stronger, and then overall the ordinance stronger as well. So I'd like to get the council's thoughts on removing that particular item from the ordinance.
If I may, I think the saying goes, there's lies, darn lies, and stats. And I did look it up. I went to the government website, let's see, Adult Sex Offender, okay, Department of Justice. And in that, it says, unfortunately, recidivism remains a difficult concept to measure, especially in the context of sex offenders. The serendipitous nature of sex crimes, the fact that few sexual offenses are reported to authorities, and variation in the ways researchers calculate recidivism rates all contribute to the problem. So if we're gonna go on stats, I don't think that's gonna be fair, because this, I think we all can agree that sexual assault is probably the most under-reported crime there is. So with that said, maybe there is some justification in removing the statistic part of it, but only that part. Because I think, I think it is an issue, and I think it is real, and I think the City of Kyle needs to address it.
Sure. And so the statement, though, just to be clear, it says that the council finds from evidence and statistical reports reveal that information. Like I said, I have not seen the data presented to us. You just made a statement from the Department of Justice that there's very little statistical data. So I think the ordinance can still stand minus that, that statement that we don't have the statistical evidence, because it says, the city council, which we are a part of, finds from evidence and statistical reports reveal this. And so if I, if I, I'll speak for myself, have not been presented with evidence and statistical reports showing that, it's not to say that I can't support this ordinance. It's just to state that that statement wouldn't be factual for us, or I'll state for me.
Agreed. I agree.
Additional thoughts from anyone we haven't heard? Or motions? I agree with the, with Councilor Ellison on that as well.
Would there be any- Mayor.
Councilor Ellison, go ahead.
Would there be, so we talked earlier, the comment that was brought up earlier about people moving, which was one of my thoughts as well. So I was appreciative that that was brought up earlier, and that this would not cover them, they would then be impacted by the rules, even if they were already a resident, and then move to another part of the city for the reasons that were brought up earlier by my colleagues, economical reasons, trying to find a different place to live, you know, rent going up, all those different things. So I just wanted to clarify, so we did have City Attorney Steins weigh in on that particular argument. And I guess I more or less heard that, basically, your legal opinion was that, I'm assuming you may have done some research, Mrs. Steins, that there is no precedent or case law that shows that that could potentially be held up in a court of law if it was challenged? Is there, I guess, I want to know if that was the end-all of that, or would there be an opportunity to define some kind of way that would be able to be upheld, to add some kind of language in the ordinance to cover that particular circumstance?
In our review, based on the questions from the last meeting, and then some prior research we'd done before, that particular type of provision, the ordinance had not come up. So my advice to councils, if you would want to include something like that, give us an opportunity to review, just to make sure that doesn't cause you any issues. Because I don't know what the courts would think about that, because it wasn't something we specifically looked at. And it's not something that I'm aware of having been added to the ordinances. And just so you know, some of the challenges that get brought up from these types of cases are, it's a constitutional argument, a lot of them are. So that means it's not just brought up in Texas, but it's brought up in other states. So sometimes other states' ordinances are helpful, because they've been through something that Texas hasn't been through yet. And so that would give us some additional information, is what I'm saying. So if council wants to look at including something like that, then I would just suggest we take a look at it and make sure it won't create an issue for the city.
I found a, looks like Houston has that same clause, sorry. Houston has the same clause. I'm reading an article, and it looks like they grandfathered in their 33 residents that it was applicable to. So maybe we look at, go to Houston and look at their laws or their ordinance and see how they did it.
Councilor Bradshaw, a question.
Paige, this is a question for you. Would there be a way to word the ordinance, or would it be possible to offer some sort of application for exemption? Someone had recommended that to me, and I can't remember the exact scenario, but it was, it was an unfortunate instance where someone was wrongfully accused, and they had an exemption to the ordinance or to the laws of wherever they were. And basically, it would be seen before a council, or I'm not sure who that would go before. But basically, give those residents who are here an opportunity to stay, or future offenders who are looking to move to Kyle, who maybe have been in an instance where they were wrongfully accused, an opportunity for their case to be heard before whoever that may be, the council or committee or-
Yes, that is something the council could include in the ordinance as an exemption or waiver process. And the, ultimately, the council would determine who decides that. It could be the council. It could be an administrative process through the staff. It would be defined by the ordinance.
I'm gonna ask not to do that, because again, I think that's plain legal. And I think that's between the offender and the, and the courts. And by putting our hand in that, we're gonna be asking for a lawsuit. So although I think that's a good idea, in actual, like, in process of, I think it's gonna be a little bit over our heads.
Councilor Ellison.
Thank you. So the comment I was gonna make after Paige responded to my question was that, I understand the human nature desire is to get this behind us, or whatever else that may be, and move on. But I'd rather measure 10 times and cut once than to be premature in our actions and miss something that we could have done. And I think this discussion, what we're having about even these particular individuals that would be impacted, and allowing staff and Paige to review, an opportunity for us to further improve this ordinance, I think would be wiser of us to do that. And so for me, I would be in favor of even postponing this item, even another, to our next council meeting, in order to give staff the opportunity to review that and provide us the most up-to-date ordinance and language once anything has been changed.
I second that motion.
Well, there's two readings. So typically, we give feedback if we have direction in those revisions, and feedback comes back for second reading, if it's something we want to move forward. But we can keep it two meetings out if you want to go through another postponement and just pick it up again next time.
I personally, sorry, Mayor, I'd rather, before even first reading, we continue to measure on this. That would be my preference.
I think what you're saying, Councilmember Ellison, is there's a lot of language in here we kind of really review over from a legal aspect as well, and reviewing it, so.
Is there any direction we want to give, based on the text? It seemed like there was some discussions around some of the elements, so that we can maybe move those parts forward and not leave those in limbo? Or do you want to just wait?
Paige, did you, the questions, I guess, the council has put before you, is that enough direction for you? Or do you need something more specific?
I understand that we'll consider adding a grandfather clause for current residents at the time the ordinance is adopted. And what I'm not clear on is whether the council wants to consider an exemption process.
I think just the grandfather clause is what I'm getting.
And then I, if a motion is required on that particular whereas item, or if we're just all amenable to that direction of staff, that would be my preference as well.
I think we're all on board with that, Councilmember Ellison.
That's sufficient for me. Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Thank you, Paige. Thank you, Chief. Thank you and your team.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, well, we'll-
Thank you, guys.
We'll move forward. We'll bring it back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Will do.
Can I just let the residents know that we are really taking you guys into consideration? And I hope you know we're trying our best to make the decision based off of where we sit and also where we live. And so I encourage you to reach out to every single one of us individually, and talk to us, and let us know your concerns, so we can try to address them.
If you go to cityofkyle.com, everyone keeps their, all their information there, so you can contact us. And if you email, everyone reads it. Thank you.
Next item, Mayor?
All right. Yeah, I'm trying, sorry, trying to get back to it. I had a bunch of maps on my screen. All right. Next up, agenda item number 17, and 18 are both being postponed. We still need official action on 17. Actually, probably 18 as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and open up agenda item number 17, an ordinance admitting chapter 53 zoning in the City of Kyle, Texas to rezone approximately 19.5 acres of land from RS to R33, et cetera. This item has a public hearing at this, that's already open. So at this time, I'm gonna ask anyone who wishes to speak on this item, the precinct board. Do you have anyone online registered to speak? Seeing none, I'm gonna keep the public hearing open and make a motion to postpone this item to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero, five to zero. Next up, agenda item number 18. We don't actually need to even bring it up, because there's, it's just sitting there. Can we just bring it back? Or do we need, you want to take action on this for the next one?
I don't believe it needs to be open, but it does need to be postponed date certain, so we can postpone it to-
All right, I'd like to just make a motion to postpone agenda item number 18 to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries five to, six to zero. Next up, agenda item number eight, 19, discussion regarding the 2020 Annual Racial Profiling Report. Councilor Ellison.
Thank you, Mayor. So last council meeting, we had the annual racial profiling report presented by the Chief of Police, Chief of Police Jeff Barnett, which has been, this is my fourth year on council, so my fourth racial profiling report. Everything has always been completely in order and filed to the fullest extent that is required by the state and T-CO. And so I want to thank and congratulate Chief and the entire agency for continuing to do that, as well as the additional reporting that was required by T-CO as a result of an investigation that has expanded the reporting. I want to proudly say that our agency, led by Chief Barnett, has completely complied and completely filled out that report to all expectations. And so I want to be very clear about that, that as far as reporting and providing everything that is required by the state and T-CO, our agency has been right there on it. And so I want to thank you, Chief, and any others. I know a number of people helped me put this together, Captain, Lieutenant. So thank you for that. So for the sake of, we, so we certainly needed to have this report in by law by March 1st, presented to the body. And so, once again, our agency has always been on top of that in presenting that in the month of February to meet that expectation. And so I just had a number of different questions, some of which were derived by me, some of which were derived by a number of residents in the area. Some of these questions I've held on for months that have been presented and asked of me, and I knew that this would be a good time to bring those forward. So I'm gonna try to go through those as quickly as I can. I will state that some of these answers would be found in the backup material that is provided. But as we all know, a lot of times that backup material is mostly read by us and not by everyone else. So providing some of this, even if it's repeated from the backup material, just for public knowledge and consumption, I felt was necessary. So I'm gonna go through those questions as efficiently as I possibly can, and thank you all for bearing with me. So first, I'm gonna start with the various, let's see, well, I'll first start with the questions, and then we'll move into the report. So first question is, Kyle Police Department conducts their own investigations into racial profiling. Would that be a correct statement, or how would we most make that statement correct?
That would be most likely correct. I would assume that they would report that allegation to the Kyle Police Department. And if so, then yes, sir, we do conduct those investigations internally. We're not looking for any external complaints or internal complaints for this most recent reporting period.
Yes, sir. And fantastic point. I was, that was one that I missed making, is that the findings in this 2020 racial profiling report had zero complaints of racial profiling. And we'll get a little bit more into that once I kind of comb through the reports. But thank you, Chief, for bringing that up. Who makes the final ruling on racial profiling complaints? Who makes the final ruling on racial profiling complaints?
Uh, under civil service law, the Director of the Agency, the Chief of Police. So that would be me. I have the final, final call on disciplinary matters and internal affairs investigations per civil service law.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, so do racial profiling reports only consist of traffic and moving violations? Are there any other racial profiling reports for other type of criminal charges?
Uh, racial profiling, uh, yes, sir, I think I understand. A racial profiling could, report could be filed on any type of encounter or act, uh, interaction with a Kyle Police officer, regardless of traffic stop, arrest, a simple inquiry on the side of the street, or a phone call, regardless, uh, a, a complaint of that nature would be counted in our numbers regardless of the type of interaction.
Thank you, sir. I think we probably got that pretty well. I know you were, you were breaking up a little bit. But once again, like I said, this is just for the public record. Let's see, what is the current protocol and policy for officers turning on their cameras, uh, for duty or before interactions?
Our police officers are outfitted with cameras in their vehicles if they're designed to make, uh, traffic stops, if they're regular patrol vehicles, and our officers are outfitted with, uh, body worn cameras. Those officers are, are required to activate those cameras in all interactions with citizens, um, where they are in any way acting in the official capacity as a police officer. Obviously, that would not mean if they're having a personal conversation or something of that nature, but really, we report all interactions with citizens when we're acting in the capacity of our position.
Fantastic. Uh, moving into the report now. So, uh, on the updated racial profiling report that is called full, uh, by T-CO that was upgraded after the investigation into agencies not reporting every year. Uh, once again, I, I wanna, uh, make clear that our agency and our department has reported every year. We were not one of those agencies that weren't reporting. Uh, so in the full report, one of the items, it is listed, uh, let's start with, uh, I'll bounce around a little bit here, but, uh, number four. Chief, under that full, full report, it says, uh, that, so the agency provides public education relating to the agency's complaint process. Could you briefly describe, uh, the public education that the agency provides for residents or citizens, uh, to file a complaint process?
Yes, sir. We, we make that information known that anyone may file a complaint of any nature with our department on our website at our window and pamphlets that our officers are given, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, our front window at the police department. We have pamphlets to hand out and they're readily available. Our officers will answer questions about how to file a complaint. And lastly, if a person receives a citation from one of our officers, we include that information on the citation itself.
Thank you.
We would also, yes, sir, we would also certainly share that at any of our community events, where we're answering questions or educating the public on how to communicate with the police department or interact with the police department. That comes up from town to town on how to compliment or complain against the actions of an officer, and we share that as well.
And I appreciate you stating that, uh, the compliment and complaint process, uh, those really should be going hand in hand, that those are both available for residents to do. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, number three, um, under the full report, still on that one, says implements a process by which an individual may file a complaint with the Kyle Police Department if the individual believes that a peace officer employed by the Kyle Police Department has engaged in racial profiling with respect to the individual. So you listed the, uh, four, I believe it was four different ways that a, uh, person can file a complaint that is either in person at the police department here on Front Street, by telephone, by email, or by mail. Additionally, the general order from chapter 2.2 in our backup material, subject racial profiling and bias reduction, also states those four places that a person could file a complaint, and how they could do that. I had a question about, let's see, it, uh, under five, uh, the Roman numeral five complaints, letter B, I guess that'd be one B maybe. It says written signed complaints alleging incidents of bias-based profiling will be fully investigated as described under policy 2.4. So are only, um, am I correct in this, in understanding that only signed complaints? So if a person reported by telephone or by email in particular, would those be incidents or, or, I know it's listed as a way for them to, uh, submit a complaint, but based on the language there, it says written or signed complaints, uh, would be fully investigated? How do we investigate those that are by phone and by email where signature is not obtained?
That's a great question. In Texas, a state law exists that says that officers who, who are subject to disciplinary action must receive a complaint that has been signed by the complainant. So that's written in state law elsewhere, it talks about any general complaint. If someone wanted to call in a complaint to our police department, we would encourage them to put their complaint in writing and swear to that so that we would have a written sworn complaint. However, the department does have at its disposal the ability for the person taking the call, which would likely be a supervisor, the captain, the chief, to turn in that information into a complaint. And then that captain, that lieutenant, or that sergeant could then be the complainant based on information from what they believe to be a credible person. So in other words, we could turn that into a signed document by a, by a Kyle Police supervisor, and that would be the complaint that has been signed and served to the officer. Generally speaking, it is expected that the complainant would be able to support their story with a signed sworn statement. But it is, there are other ways around it if, um, we turn that into a supervisor complaint.
That's very insightful, Chief. I appreciate that information. I think that, that is a good thing to understand, that that can be done that way. So thank you for explaining that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so all, all complaints, uh, even as bogus as they may seem, as long as it is, uh, a complaint made and they attest to it, whether it's signed it or what have you, all of those complaints are fully investigated. There are no complaint that would be made, that would be determined in any way that it would not be investigated to some extent. Is that a correct statement?
Um, that's a pretty large statement. So complaints come in all sizes. Um, some complaints may be very small in nature and may not necessarily even be subject to disciplinary action. And complaints are handled based on the, I would say, the level of accusation of wrongdoing. So some complaints to a patrol sergeant about very minor infractions could be handled by consultation from that supervisor to the officer in minor correction. The more serious in nature the complaint, the higher that goes through our complaint process. And some may become what we would call a full-blown internal affairs investigation. So there are different levels of complaints and different levels are different manners in which we may address those complaints.
Understood. Um, so is that, is that an objective scale? Or is that a subjective scale by, uh, individual within the police department?
Um, I think that would be a subjective response, uh, based on our, within our policy and procedures, meaning what is the accusation? What is the potential, if any? Um, I'll give you an example of rudeness. Rudeness is a scale that's hard to judge. Uh, because somebody gets arrested and goes to jail, they may think the officer is rude. Uh, but once they talk to a supervisor, the officer, the supervisor may realize this is not a policy violation, this is a, a, a perception or a misunderstanding of the application of law or duties. And therefore, they wouldn't turn to an internal affairs investigation because someone was upset that they were arrested when that was lawful. So, yeah, I would say it's definitely subjective, uh, to the people involved.
Thank you, and thank you for providing, providing an example as well.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, let, letter C underneath that same section, uh, it says that, uh, they will be notified the results of the investigations when such investigation is completed. Is there any other communication, uh, between the agency or department and the complainant, between the time that they make the, uh, that they file the complaint and between the time that it is investigated and this decision is determined, determined?
Um, I would, I would dare say that each investigation or complaint is, is different. Uh, sometimes we may need to go back and ask for clarity or additional information from the complainant, so we would certainly contact them there. But if we have been provided sufficient information to conduct an investigation or a review into our employee's behavior, then we may not communicate with them again throughout the investigation until it is complete.
Understood. Okay. Moving, I think I'm done with, with that report. Thank you, Chief, for your, your questions, so, I mean, your, your answers. Um, now moving to the report that states at the top, it was, uh, it was from you, it's to Mr. Sellers and, uh, Mr. Irvin, Mr. Hendricks, and the City Secretary. Uh, it has a breakdown of the percentage of total stop by.
Yes, sir.
Maybe a moment, a moment.
I'm ready, I'm ready, yes, sir, I'm there.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so there's a various pieces of information, and I appreciate the breakdown. It's always very thorough, it's broken down really well. So thank you to your staff with that. Um, so one thing that I, I've brought up in past years about the racial profiling report is that certainly, uh, the information is provided on whether the officer knows, uh, essentially what the person looks like or their race, ethnicity, uh, sex, various different things before the stop. And so, um, it was stated in the report that only in 85 instances, uh, were the race and ethnicity known, and sex of the person known prior to the stop. Eighty-five out of a total of 8,179 traffic stops. So, uh, very, very few, very, very small fraction. So, uh, I've, I've asked before, and you and I have talked about this previously too, and you were, you said you were able to pull this information. So, uh, so the size of that would be the 8,000, 8,094 other stops where that was unknown. Uh, do we have a breakdown of once that this stop has occurred and the officer has then identified the sex, race, ethnicity of the individual? Do we, uh, have a breakdown of what occurs once they realize what the individual looks like?
Um, yep. That, that would be the same information that is consistent with, with what happened as a result of that stop. Because obviously, when they make their way to that vehicle, yet, and yet, before they take any action, they've obviously made contact with that driver, and they then know the race or sex of who they're talking to, which is before any action has been taken. Uh, there's no way to jump inside their head and decide what, did they change their mind about what they were gonna do at that moment or anything? But we do have the data that says what did they do once they knew their race or sex or anything else that they were able to learn at that window? And you're right, only 85 of the instances did they know, uh, that information prior to the stop. So basically, out of the numbers that we have before, since that number is so microscopically small, 85 out of the 8,179, we do know what their actions were and what they did based on the information that we've got in the report.
So, so you're, you're, you're stating that in the report, it does break down the 85, and I certainly appreciate that. My, my, about the 8,000 or so, what, the 8,179 less the 85, what is the breakdown of, um, for each one of those ethnicities and races and the sexes, what then occurs? Citation, arrest, things like that, what occurs with that other, that larger percentage?
I do see what you're asking, and, and no, we did not break down that on it. I think statistically speaking, it would be exactly the same numbers that you see here. I don't think you're gonna be, I don't think removing 85 and then trying to determine what they did with the rest of the 8,000, just shy of 8,100, I think you said 8,000 and close to 100. I don't think that significantly, or statistically speaking, you're gonna see any changes in the percentage of any, of anything. I, I, I don't have the specific numbers, but statistically speaking, I think you're gonna see the same percentage breakdown that you see here.
So you, let me make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So you're saying that of that, less than 8,100, that where they didn't know the race and sex and ethnicity of the person prior, you're saying that that breakdown of what happened with those individuals would be similar to the breakdown of the statistics of the 85?
No, no, sir, statistically, uh, similar to the statistics you see in the box on page two of the report that you're speaking of. Where you see, uh, you see those breakdown of numbers, I think then you carry that same percentage of how did we impact those drivers? And as you go through the, the subsequent paragraphs, it talks about both the actions. For example, if you look in, on, on page two, the next to the last paragraph, uh, we talk about how many were arrested, how many received a citation, how many received a citation and arrest. Now granted, that is the 8,179. I think statistically speaking, if you remove 85 out of that, I think you're gonna see numbers that are very statistically similar to the 420 arrested. Granted, it may be reduced by a few, but just like that, so would the citations. That would be reduced by a few, meaning to account for the 85 that we, we would pull out of those numbers. If you were to turn that into a statistic, you would see statistically the same breakdown. And I say that because removing 85 from the 8,179 is, is statistically insignificant to the overall percentages of breakdown. So basically, what you see happening of the 8,179 traffic stops, uh, you see the, the subsequent numbers of the 420 arrests, the 1,900, or, yeah, 1,982 citations. Fifty-one of those were cited and released. If you remove the 85 from those numbers, you're still gonna see numbers of, and I'll make, um, approximating, 418 arrests, 1,976 citations. So statistically, it wouldn't change much.
Right, but, and I understand what you're saying, but I think we're, we're missing each other here. So of the 8,094 that, uh, the remainder of the stops where the, the race was not known, that, so that 8,094, I, I'm looking for the breakdown of those 8,094. What percentage of those, um, so I know you said the, the total of it is those percentages of stops. So we have the percentage of stops based on race. But then the, the next part of it is what I'm looking for, is of that percentage of, of the stops, what happens with, uh, each race and ethnicity that whether a citation, arrest was made, or all that? So that, taking it one step further and then getting that breakdown of, of those individuals, particularly the ones that are less the, uh, where the, the ethnicity and sex were known before.
Okay, we could absolutely get you those numbers.
Okay, so we, we don't have those now?
Uh, no, sir, I don't have them in front of me. But we could definitely get them. All we would be, we're doing is removing 85 people from the 8,000. But we could definitely get them, all we would be, we're doing is removing eighty-five people from the eight thousand one hundred and seventy-nine, and then using the same classifications and telling you how many of those were arrested, cited, cited and arrested, verbal warnings, written warnings and written warnings with arrests. Those numbers would obviously decrease, um, somewhere up to eighty-five, so.
Right, just ba, but, but based on race, race, ethnicity and sex, though, that, that's, that's the key thing that I think we're missing here. Is that, yeah, not just the breakdown of the, the eight thousand ninety-four and what happened there, but the breakdown based on race, ethnicity and sex of that remaining number. Does that, does that make sense what I'm asking?
It, it does, sir, yes, I think we could, I think we can dive into that and pull that out and get there far, yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm really hoping we can, because, uh, like I said, I cannot praise y'all enough in what you've done. It's just, that very specific item has been one that I've, I've, that's what I've been asking for pretty much every year I've been on council. So that, that, that's what I'm looking for, not only just that breakdown of the person, the stops of the remaining ones that didn't know the race, but breaking them down within that of each individual race and sex there. So, I, we're, we're on the same page, so thank you, sir. I'll move on from that. My final, uh, question and report here, so, uh, I certainly appreciate Lieutenant, uh, Griffith's, uh, synopsis here and report, I think it's, I think he largely captured what, what has happened. Obviously, with the pandemic, there were a lot less stops, the interactions with people, there were a lot less of those. So overall, our, our interactions were much lower and the stops were much lower. Uh, and he probably correctly points out largely due to the pandemic. So, going back to that, that box, we have a percentage of stops. And if we compare that to the breakdown of the demographics of our city. Now, I know that that's a little tough, because these stops aren't necessarily all people that are residents of Kyle, correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes, sir. Major interstate of the thirty-five going through our community, that is highly, um, likely that we would stop somebody who does not reside in Kyle, yes.
Right, so it could be a resident of Kyle, it could be somebody passing through, so that will distort these numbers a little bit, that it wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison to say that, you know, well, for example, your very first one there, eleven point eight nine percent, uh, of stops were of resident, or, or people that are black. Even though there's less than five percent black in the city of Kyle, it, it's kind of distorted, because these could be people just passing, passing through, uh, our city that aren't residents of Kyle. So, I guess, I, I'm agreeing that, you know, you couldn't make exactly that, that comparison, uh, so easily.
Yes, sir.
Outside of that, the statistics of the percentage of stop breakdown are fairly consistent with the breakdown of our makeup of our Kyle residents. The only one that largely shot up to me, because last I looked, it was about four point seven percent of our city, uh, are African-Americans. Twelve percent of the stops there are of those individuals. Um, but like I said, I do want to clarify and be fair that these all aren't stops of residents here in Kyle. So I wanted to make that point clear as well. Um, the final thing I say, um, I actually, I, I think that's, that's it, uh, for me. So I certainly appreciate everybody's patience with me while I worked through those questions. Like I said, a lot of these were brought to me from even, uh, last summer, a, a number of different things. And I have a number of conversations with residents about our police department. And I, everybody, or a lot of people know that I am a graduate of the Kyle Citizens Police Academy, which I think opened my eyes to a lot of different things. I encourage any and every citizen to go through that as well. Um, I've certainly had my run-ins with, uh, law enforcement in my, in my much younger self, and had, had some unfortunate things that have happened. I'm pretty sure there's a pretty strong case of a, uh, incident that happened to me while I was a student at Texas State that probably was a racial profiling event. Uh, however, I will say that I did not report that. Even as my friends that were of different races, uh, when I told them the story, it was very clear to them that racial profiling had happened to me. Um, and it is a, it is a difficult thing when something like that happens to you to have the, the strength and courage to report something like that? Because when you're dealing with, um, authority and people that, um, you know, it's the same thing in, in the workforce, you know, uh, we're all different types of reporting and different things. A lot of things go unreported because of that fear, so making that as accessible as possible and encouraging and, and, and telling people what clearly, uh, is defined uh, within our agency as racial profiling, and for them to have an understanding of that and the definition of that, and what to look out for and what might not be that. So we don't have erroneous, uh, things happen as well. That's the purpose of this, and I want to thank you, Chief, for, uh, always being willing to answer questions and be as transparent as possible and, and let not only just this council, because it might, these questions weren't for the council, these questions were for our community, uh, to understand what the processes and policies are. That was a big part of what we did last summer in our Tuesday night meeting before that Juneteenth Dialogue for Peace and Progress that, what, four hours that you and Captain and others presented and opened up the book and, and really helped people understand the current policies that are in place. And I have to say, I got a lot of different, various pieces of feedback from that, including people that were like, okay, I, I appreciate that I understand that now. And I think that's a lot of times the missing piece, is people just don't understand what the policies are to know if it's something they're comfortable with or not. And I think that being open with these things and having a discussion and providing these reports as you have done helps people get to a place where they can feel comfortable, uh, in their community and have a strong relationship with their law enforcement. So, um, I'll yield the floor, but thank you again, Chief, uh, for always being willing to, uh, communicate not only with us, but our, our community as well and help, uh, them better understand things, so thank you, sir.
Absolutely, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison, any other comments on that item? Councilmember Flores-Cell.
Just, hopefully, just a quick question. Um, is there any way to figure out how many of these people are residents and how many are not? Because taking into consideration the numbers versus the, um, population of Kyle, and all I could find online was a twenty-nineteen population, which we know is, uh, lower than what it currently is, and that's forty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-three. But using those numbers statistically with the numbers that you gave us shows thirty-six point five six percent of people that you pulled over of the eight thousand were black. Sixteen percent were Hispanic and fourteen percent, fourteen point nine three were white. So what may concern me is that we are pulling over two times the amount of black people than we are of white. And, uh, probably more than that, like two point five. And then, uh, as far as Hispanics, Hispanics go versus blacks, we are pulling over, uh, about the same, two point two, two point five. So I think it's important that we know if these are residents or not. Because among black people, um, if you are a black male, you are seventy-one percent times higher to get pulled over than a black female. As a white, you are sixty-one percent more likely to get pulled over than a white female. And then as a Hispanic, you are sixty-eight point two percent more likely to get pulled over than a Hispanic female. So if, whether we're doing this on thirty-five or as residents, I think it makes a big difference. And if there's any way that we can track that just to make sure and to monitor, um, I think that would be a, a benefit to the city. And, um, just to recap, the last time we talked about this, I was okay with the fact that there were no reports written. I was okay with it, and I, and I was going to drop it, and then I saw it was back on the agenda. And then I started playing with the numbers, and it blew my mind that there was such a difference between whites, blacks and Hispanics. And I'm not saying this is racial profiling, I'm just saying at somewhere along the line, we have to have standing to make an assumption. And so for me, it was easy to look the other way when I didn't, when I knew there, there was no complaint filed. But as I looked closer at the numbers, I started to get worried and thought, maybe there's something that we're inadvertently overlooking just by something simple as, no, we don't have any complaints. And so I would like to know if there is a way that we can track how many of these people are residents and how many of these are not? Because then we can track, um, percentage-wise, uh, I guess a little more precisely, like these numbers don't mean much if like the nine hundred and seventy-three people that you pulled over that were black, um, out of that, maybe fifty were on, on, you know, the highway. And so that skews my thirty-six percent a little bit more than, than if they were in a city or if they're a residence.
Councilwoman.
Um, Council, I'll try to answer that question about. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mary, I'm, pause.
No, go ahead.
Okay, uh, um, the short answer is no, but here's why. When we do not issue you a citation or a written warning, but they may get a verbal warning, we do not capture that information from the person that may have just received a written warning. We may only capture what we, what we describe as stop data. Stop data is the data that is required in this report that you see here. Uh, it does not translate into what is their address and then is that address within or outside of our jurisdiction. So we would not be able to give you the full comparison that you're seeking because we do not ask and obtain that information, uh, in a system and then compare it to whether they live in our jurisdiction or not, in our city limits or not. What I could give you is a breakdown of the addresses of all people in which we issued a citation, which means we can determine jurisdiction. The same would go for arrest, and the same would go for a written warning if we obtained their full address. And not in all cases do we obtain that full address. But for citations and arrests, we could take that address and obviously with eight thousand tickets, this will take a while, because just because their driver's license says Kyle does not mean they live in the city limits of Kyle, means they have a mailing address in the city of Kyle. Uh, we could give you that breakdown, but not of those that received a, otherwise a warning. And, and thus, we didn't capture that to be able to give you that full comparison. And the system doesn't run a report for that. Um, so we're talking about hand-counting basically eight thousand one hundred and seventy-nine different stops through a, a bunch of data collection points. And then also comparing that to the map to determine, is that or is that not in the city of Kyle? It's certainly easy if they have an outside city, and it would be a little more difficult for county roads and whatnot that have a Kyle address but may live two or three miles outside the actual city limits.
Okay, I appreciate that, and, and I want everybody to know that I am Team Kyle and Team Kyle PD. Um, I just want to try to be proactive, um, in an issue that would, nobody may see, like, I, I, it only took me, like, stopping, seeing the agenda and doing these numbers to realize there, there might have been inadvertent racial profiling. And by that, I mean, you may not do it on purpose, but what the outcome shows is there is a greater, um, there's a greater risk to being a black man driving in Kyle than, than it is to be white. Um, by two point five percent, you're more likely to get pulled over. So, um, I don't want that in Kyle, I don't think that is in anybody's hearts as far as a police officer. But in order to, um, avoid that look or the ultimate outcome, I think that's something that maybe we should take a look at.
So, Council, uh, Councilmember Kel, are you saying that if somebody's breaking the law not to pull them over if you think they're a certain color?
Uh, no, I think we all know better than that. I'm a rule follower, but what I am saying is, looking at these numbers, and here we go again with the statistics, looking at the numbers statistically, um, you are two point five times more likely to get pulled over in the city of Kyle if you're black versus if you're white, um, and two point two times more likely if you're, um, black versus Hispanic.
Chief, uh, correct me if you're wrong, but, uh, several years back, um, this, the council at the time, uh, said that we're, our neighborhoods were safe, and we're going to start controlling more of I-35, which I wasn't really for, because I think our neighborhood should be number one. Uh, are the majority of our stops on I-35?
This year's report, Commissioner, this year's report indicated that the majority of our stops were on city streets at three thousand six hundred and fifty-four, closely followed by the, the ones on the interstate at three thousand two hundred and eighty-three. And if it's all right, I may add that we get hundreds, and I mean hundreds, of calls per month to respond to the interstate for aggressive drivers, reckless drivers, DWI drivers, and, and you name it. So the number one call volume location, if you look across the board for the PD, is the interstate and the adjacent service roads. And the majority of those calls are traffic-related complaints, um, of, of a large variety of types. So, we haven't particularly increased our enforcement time on the interstate, but we certainly get called to the interstate by the community and other motorists to respond to the interstate to address an aggressive driver, a potentially tired or intoxicated driver, or someone that they believe is otherwise a dangerous driver. To include, especially at night, a large number of what people believe to be intoxicated driver calls that call our officers from the communities out to the interstate. And Kyle does, Kyle PD does in fact, uh, end up making a large number of DWI related arrests, uh, something that we hope to bring back to you in a few weeks to actually recognize the good work of our officers. They are actually locating and removing a large number of DWI offenders, um, every day, every day of the week, especially on the weekends. Uh, there is one other thing I would like to mention that affects our, those numbers. Not only do we get called out to the interstate by citizens requesting our response, but there's also a large number of calls that result in a traffic stop that were not necessarily the officer making a decision to stop somebody for a traffic violation. And I'll give you an example. Tonight at three AM, if a community, uh, believes that they see a theft in progress and they call 911, and they give a good description of the vehicle, and they describe acts that make the officer have a reasonable suspicion that there is another crime being committed, meaning perhaps a burglary of a vehicle. Um, when the officer gets into the neighborhood and he spots that vehicle, and he's there investigating a potential burglary of a motor vehicle, and he has reasonable, uh, he has reasonable information that would lead him to make a traffic stop. He didn't make that traffic stop based on the race of the people in the car. He didn't base it on his own observations of a traffic violation in many cases. Uh, sometimes maybe they observed that as well. But when they make that stop and find the car burglars with stolen items in their car and make the arrest, they're going to track that data too, because they did conduct a traffic stop. Now, it might have been based on a call or from a citizen or very, um, reliable information otherwise, but those numbers also get counted into this data. So when we think about an, an officer out patrolling and that, I just want to caution us to understand that not all eight thousand one hundred and seventy-nine traffic stops are the result of an officer making an observation and an independent decision to stop a car without other factors. A lot, a lot, and I don't have the number, I just know from day-to-day activities, a lot of our traffic stops are also the result of other activities that end up becoming a traffic stop as we investigate a potential theft or, or other crime as well. I hope that has shed some light on the numbers too. And then also, when we compare the numbers, um, obviously, as Councilmember Flores-Cell pointed out to us, that, that obviously it's not directly related to our community, because we, we are a commuting community here in Kyle. There's several major roadways going east and west, and most definitely running north and south on the interstate.
I think that's, uh, really important information that we get out, mostly because if someone is, is, you know, uneducated as me, I don't understand all the stops. That's good information to let the people out there know that we are not just stopping people in Kyle. It is, I, I was unaware that we were stopping people on the highway. Um, so I think in order to put a little bit more, um, trust in our officers, that that information is really important and that the residents need to know that, so I do appreciate you, um, providing that to us.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Chief, thank you and your staff for this report, thank you for the excellent work that y'all do. Uh, it's great to hear that we didn't have one racial profiling, uh, complaint against us last year. It shows, uh, what we're going for. It shows, uh, what we're going for as a department. I think council and the PD working together is an example of, uh, how things can get done right, and, uh, having these conversations help as well. So thank you for, you and your staff for all you do, Chief, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Anything else? Uh, we don't have another exec, we don't have a city manager report, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilman Marizzo, we are adjourned.